Everyone, and welcome to the June 25th meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have roll call?
Yes, council members Bratman.
Here.
Varpetian.
Here.
Marasatrian.
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Cassie McCarthy of Director of Mission Integration at Dignity Health Glendale Memorial Hospital. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. We take a moment to pause and breathe. We remember that as human beings, we share the same air, the same earth, the same warmth of the sun, the same silver light of the moon, and of course, the same days and months of the year. May our shared humanity be blessed and be a blessing. In this shared space, may we all be an embodiment of kindness to one another and extend our hand of healing to each other always. Be blessed, Glendale, and be a blessing. Amen.
May we have your report, please.
Yes, the agenda for the June 25th, 2024 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on June 20th, 2024 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
And what's next?
Next are presentations and appointments. The first item is the announcement that there will be no City Council and Housing Authority meeting on July 2nd, 2024. The next regular meeting will be on July 9th, 2024.
All right, what's next?
Next is a proclamation designating June 2024 as Pride Month.
Great. Before I read the proclamation, I'd like to invite the members of Glendale Out, our Commission on the Status of Women's Chair, Diane Lambalot, and Galus, who are present here today. And, oh, and East Area Progressive Democrats, President Hans Johnson.
Good evening. I'll begin with my remarks. Good evening, Marasatrian and members of the City Council. My name is Diane Lambalot, and I'm Chair of the Commission on the Status of Women. I thank you on behalf of my fellow commissioners for this 2024 Pride Month proclamation approved during the Commission's May 13th meeting. Supporting LGBTQ+ rights falls within the Commission's mission to advance social justice and equity and ensure equality of rights and opportunities for all women and girls in Glendale, including those who are members of the LGBTQ+ community. Indeed, the concept of human rights is that all people have equal rights. In other words, that their rights are the same, but not to say that all people are the same. The Commission stands in solidarity with the LGBT+ community and organizations that are doing the important work of raising consciousness and creating safe spaces for LGBTQ+ people in our city. Thank you again for this important proclamation and for lighting City Hall in pride colors during the month of June. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there representatives from the other organizations that'd like to say anything?
Good evening, Council. My name is Sean Chalterosian, and on behalf of Galus LGBTQ+ Armenian Society, I'm here to accept this public invitation with the community. We are grateful for the opportunity to be here, and we recognize that there is still work to be done in order to ensure a safe Glendale for all. We call on our community leaders to work together to foster a welcoming atmosphere for everyone who calls Glendale home. A safe Glendale for all not only includes the LGBTQ+ community, but also the elderly, the disabled, the youth, immigrants, people of color, and all of the other marginalized communities which fall between the cracks. Our work as a cultural hub and resource group emphasizes the importance of intersectionality in our fight for justice. Galus will continue to build a loving community which celebrates our roots, both Armenian and LGBTQ+, as we advocate for a better, more inclusive future. Thank you to the City of Glendale, and happy Pride Month.
All right, do we have anyone else?
Hans Johnson, on behalf of the East Area Progressive Democrats, I just want to say thank you to the City of Glendale for this proclamation and for the unanimous signatures thereon. And I want to say a special thanks to the Commission on the Status of Women. Any locality that is safe and respectful for women is also safe and respectful for LGBTQ+ people. And this resolution is a recognition of that fact and also a celebration of this important month. Nine years ago today, marriage equality was extended to LGBTQ+ families at the highest reaches of our government. Long may the pride flag wave, and long may the significance of its diversity and the celebration of diversity in that flag be true in this city and in all surrounding communities. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Giver Kudian, and I'm here with my family today, my husband Kado and my two kids. And we want to thank you guys, because this is one step closer to protecting my children, because they are children of a gay family. And, you know, we're happy to be Glendale citizens, and we're happy to vote for you guys. And thank you, guys. You guys are doing the right steps to protect us.
Thank you. I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read parts of the proclamation, because it's pretty long. But whereas since 1970, Americans come together every June to honor and celebrate the 1969 Stonewall uprising that catalyzed and brought great visibility to the LGBTQ+ civil rights movement. And whereas all citizens on these lands deserve to live without fear of discrimination and violence on the basis of gender identity, gender expression, sexual orientation, or otherwise. Whereas honoring Pride Month is a first step in fostering a constructive and compassionate dialogue within the City of Glendale regarding LGBTQ+ rights, progress, and equality. Whereas we unequivocally denounce all acts of hate, discrimination, and violence against our LGBTQ+ residents and neighbors, and uphold the importance of being a support system and the critical role it plays in the safety and well-being of the LGBTQ+ communities of Glendale. And whereas we recognize and celebrate that the City of Glendale is comprised of diverse, resilient communities, including members of the LGBTQ+ communities who actively contributed to the cultural, civic, and economic flourishing of the city. Now therefore, we, the Glendale City Council, with the promise of equality, unity, and love for all, proclaim June 2024 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in Glendale, California. I will, I will note that the proclamation is signed by all five of us. And I will come down to present this, and we can all take a photo. Did any of my colleagues want to say anything?
Oh. No, we'll go down for the photo.
Okay.
Are we all going down?
I'm not going.
Let, let the mayor, I'll make my comments. I think it's appropriate for the mayor to follow protocol.
We'll let her do it.
We'll, we'll maybe photobomb you.
All right, and what's next? Oh, we have, we have one card?
We have a card and a caller on this item.
All right. Is Mr. Mohill the first one?
Yes.
If we can give one, Mr. Mohill, give me one second for people to quiet down. Go ahead, sir. Let's start the clock.
Yeah. Let me wait till the room quiets down, please. Okay? Maybe they'll sit down and listen to me. The people are walking out. Are they afraid to hear?
Go ahead, go ahead. Can everybody please quiet down in the back? Thank you. All right, go ahead.
Our first speaker on this item is Mike Mohill. Mike, you have three minutes.
Why is this council recognizing June 24 as Gay Pride Month? Why? You are pandering not to biological gay men or biological lesbian women, but to transgender community. A community of confused so-called men and women. Biological gay men and biological lesbian women do not need a gay month to feel good. The transgender community has hijacked the gay and lesbian community, setting it back 100 years. In the United States, about 10% of the population is gay and lesbian. And of that percentage, about 1.4% are transgender. By adding the letters LBGQXYZ or any other letters, the trans people have added to biological gay men and biological lesbian women. You have been played as a bunch of fools. Let me repeat myself as a bunch of fools. If you want to celebrate life, you should declare June as a heterosexual month. That's right, a heterosexual month. For without straight men and straight women, there could not be gays, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender, or any other form of sexuality. Please stop pandering to the transgender and drag queens of this community. Thank you.
No, no, can you, Mr. Shelton? And I'm just gonna give this warning to everybody that's in the room. If you haven't had a chance to review the rules of this chamber, we're trying to conduct business here, so if you break the rules, please consider this your warning. Thank you. And this applies to everybody in this room. Next.
We have a caller on this item. It's Araik Sinanyan. Araik, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Araik Sinanyan. I'm a queer Armenian activist and community activist. I think it's great that there's a pride proclamation, because I believe that Glendale is extremely intolerant when it comes to diversity and sexualities and gender expression. I myself grew up my whole life in this community being bullied for being different, for being queer, before I even knew what that word meant. I do want to say that unfortunately, this intolerance not only is among the community, but is also in its leadership, including the Police Department and the City Council. I experienced a series of three targeted hate incidents by an individual in the community targeted at my sexuality. This happened on February 26th, April 5th, and May 13th. Unfortunately, when I complained to the GPD, they actually were gaslighting me the entire time, because this person had harassed me, stalked me off of social media, since I'm a content creator, and also was following me, filming me, and yelling slurs at me. The GPD did nothing about it. In fact, they were gaslighting me the entire time. The next time he followed me was on April 5th. He yelled more slurs in Armenian to me regarding my sexuality, and then nothing was done about it. After the first incident, I emailed the entire City Council at that time, which doesn't include Boston, and I also emailed the entire city staff at that time. I got not one reply, not one reply, even though I've emailed them before and received replies. So this homophobia and the queer phobia is alive and well, and it's among the leadership. Just because a pride proclamation is passed doesn't mean anything is done about serious hate. I've had to outreach to LA LGBT Center. I've had to outreach to Long Beach LGBT Center to get not only trauma counseling, but legal assistance, because I am now being pursued with a criminal case, because I tried to leave the situation on the third occasion, and this individual got in front of my car and would not allow me to leave the situation. I'm not safe in my own community. I've been an HOA president. I've been to GCC. I have, I have a social justice organization called Bridging the Borders that helps build solidarity between Armenians and other marginalized communities. And my own leaders are doing nothing about it. But they're happy to make political statements driven by their own personal interests in the political arena, and I do not believe that they care about queer people. That's evidenced by me reaching out to numerous people, and I'm still facing a legal case that's ongoing. This person is still in the community. They've had nothing done to them by GPD or the Glendale City Council. They're a young adult, and I don't know how many other people they're constantly bullying. If they're bullying a grown adult, they're bullying other people, and they're fresh out of high school, an adult of, of a young age. So.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you for your comment. And that's all.
Did anyone want to make comments?
I'll just make a comment briefly.
We stopped taking cards at the end of the first speaker?
Community event announcements. I mean, yeah.
The only thing I want to bring up, Mayor, is, first of all, I'm very glad that we issued this proclamation. I'm glad that we had so many members of our community here to accept this. As to the question as to why we're doing this now, a little bit of history for Mr. Mohill and others. It was 55 years ago, almost to the day when the Stonewall riots occurred, when police raided a bar in Greenwich Village, specifically targeting members of the queer community. And subsequently, you know, we've learned a lot more as a country about the injustices that were carried out against American citizens because of who they were, who they loved, the relationships they were in. And I think it's important for all of us to learn those lessons of the past and to treat each other better as Americans, as human beings. You know, in 2016, the site of this seminal civil rights movement became a national monument where others can go visit it today and learn about the history of what the movement was about. And certainly everywhere, it's, it's important to note that at least, there's at least over 60 countries in the world today where homosexuality is a criminal act and it can be punishable. We are not one of those countries. We're very fortunate to live in a free country. And the freedoms and the rights afforded in the Constitution apply to all Americans. So that's all I have to say, and thank you all for coming. Glendale is a city for all people and from all backgrounds and wherever people have come from and regardless of who they love. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll just.
Ramen.
Just say, it was wonderful to see all of you standing here. Beautiful crowd. Thank you to the Commission on the Status of Women. Thank you to Galus. Thank you to Glendale Out. Thank you to the East Area Progressive Democrats. And thank you to everybody who's held strong and stood up against the haters in our community, who, some of whom are here today. The more hatred that gets thrown at this community, the higher we have to fly that pride flag. The reason pride is so important is to celebrate a community that had to hide, that had fear of losing their job, losing their home, being imprisoned, being beaten, being killed for many, many, many years, until at Stonewall, a group of people said enough is enough. And the pride events that we've seen, starting in 1970, are all about saying, we exist whether you like it or not. We're here. And we deserve to be treated as equal human beings. And a lot has, has happened since then. A lot has improved, as we know. Marriage equality, being able to be out in the military, like my younger brother who's in the Navy, and he is an out gay man. He could not have done that years ago. So a lot has improved, the protections against housing discrimination, against job discrimination. But as we can see here, there are still some who would like the gay community go back into its box, go away and not be seen. And we won't allow that as a city, and we will continue to stand up for the LGBTQ+ community at every turn, and I am committed to that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, I may not know the history as well as my colleagues, but Glendale is a welcoming city. We have 56 different languages that are being spoken in Glendale. Everybody's welcome. Hate has no place in Glendale. Everyone has to live the way they want, the way they desire, without any harassment. And I would not stand for anybody to discriminate others, regardless of their race, gender, sexual orientation, or what have you. It is given. Armenians, when we moved to Glendale, we started in South Glendale. Yeah, we were discriminated against in the beginning, but then we moved to the Central Glendale, then we moved to Glenox area, then we moved up in the hills. It, it, it happens to every group, every, every group that came to the United States in general. But we are, we are, there, there is no hate in Glendale. There is no room for discrimination in Glendale, and that's all I wanted to say.
Okay. I'll just take this moment, because I think there's a lot that's been said. I'm just gonna take this moment to say thank you to the organizations that create safe spaces and safe havens for our LGBTQ+ members. I know what that means for those, especially in marginalized communities, which this issue is very layered for. And so I want to commend you on your work, and we look forward to working with each of you. Thank you again. And thank you, I was so happy to see such a big crowd this year. So thank you for coming. All right, next item.
Next is a proclamation recognizing Juneteenth Independence Day.
All right. I believe this is the first of its kind that we're doing, very long overdue. And we have Tasha Jenkins, who is here from Black in Glendale, who's gonna be accepting the proclamations. Come. I'll read just parts of the proclamation and then be able to say a few words. Whereas Juneteenth is recognized as Freedom Day or our country's second Independence Day. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln first issued the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1, 1863, freeing the enslaved people in the South, but those orders were ignored by Confederate Southern slave owners. Whereas Juneteenth is a time to reflect on the progress made in the fight for civil rights and to recognize the resilience, endurance, and contributions of Black Americans throughout history. Whereas Glendale acknowledges its racist past as a sundown town and the formal resolution adopted by City Council on September 15, 2020, publicly recognizing the city's history of discrimination towards people of color and committing to advancing systemic race, systemic change. Whereas the City of Glendale approved the creation of a human relations group to continue to implement practices that address systemic racism, bias, and the injustices that weaken our city. Whereas Glendale is proud to recognize Juneteenth as an official state holiday, honoring the centuries of struggles and triumphs that have brought us to this moment. Now therefore, I, Elena Satryan, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaim June 19, 2024, as Juneteenth Independence Day, and call upon our residents to educate ourselves on our nation's history and focus on what we can do to bring us together and move us forward towards justice. Thank you. Thank you. If you'd like to say a few words?
Yes, so I'm Tasha Jenkins. I'm a member of Black in Glendale. We have been in existence in Glendale for about 17 years. We created the group Black in Glendale to bring our families together so that we will feel united in the City of Glendale, because we didn't have any support when we first came. So we created family dynamics in the city to be able to carry those things out, so our kids will feel a part of the culture. We acknowledge and we accept your proclamation for Juneteenth. We have been doing our own Juneteenth at Verdugo Park for years, where we have families come out and lay family-style picnics and barbecues, and people will come out and they will support, so that we will have systems in place that our kids will know that we are uplifted. We're very grateful and we're excited about the City Council members that acknowledges Juneteenth as a holiday in the City of Glendale, and we look forward to many more ways in which we can continue to enrich other families about our culture and what we can add to the culture. Right? So we thank you very much for doing the proclamation. Some of our members were not able to be here. They're on vacation. They're working. They're traveling. So I am here on, on the behalf of all of our members of Black in Glendale. But we thank you for the proclamation.
And I do want to note that I recently had a meeting with Tanita from Black in Glendale. There were several follow-up items that were brought forth from the time of the resolution, from housing to HR and so forth. And so I think we're gonna start working through those items. And I think, I believe, at least with our HR, we've started doing that. I also recognize that it requires council appropriation for funding. And so I think part of the resolution also included us taking concrete steps. Black in Glendale has launched a scholarship fund.
Yes.
And I would like to-
The Verdugo Woodlands are the ones who sponsors the scholarship.
Right. And so I would like to agendize for a future item for us to, as a city sponsor, for, at a minimum $5,000 for the scholarship fund that would go to Black students.
The Black Scholarships Fund, the Black Student Scholarship Fund.
Yes. So I'm putting that official request in to our city manager for a future agenda item. And I believe my colleagues don't have anything else. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and thank you for putting on the event at Verdugo Park.
Thank you.
And we're looking forward to actually, you know, potentially partnering. I think that was one of the things that we talked about, that-
For next year.
You know, whatever, however you want to organize that. You know, I've always believed more that, you know, it turns out better when we do it in partnership versus just the city doing things on its own. And so I look forward to that as well.
Thank you.
I don't know if you were part of the Kwanzaa event that was organized at YWCA five, six years ago.
I'm always a part of the Kwanzaa event. You and your wife came. I remember you very well.
It was a great event, very interesting event that we learn and appreciate each other's culture. Also, we organized an event in Alex Theater. It was, again, a cultural event. There were so many celebrities from African-American community and from Africa. And there was a king from Africa who attended. And I was the mayor at that time, and my wife and I, we were there, and we greeted them. It was a great event. So I hope we can have a little bit larger events like that in Glendale so everyone can participate and understand and learn, you know, in general, each other's culture and language and all the practices and to appreciate each other.
And I know for a city like Glendale, it's small, but our culture has been broad for years. And so everyone gets to benefit from the culture of our Black community. We're in music. We're in sports. We're broadcasters. I don't have to go on and on. But our culture is big, but it's the accepting of uplifting. And I appreciate you saying that, Bart. And it was really a great event that you and your wife, Armin, came to. I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you. I'll come down.
Thank you.
All right, next.
Next are consent items, including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed. Mayor Satryan, we have a request from the public for pulling item 4B.
All right.
And Madam Mayor, I will abstain from approval of the minutes, but I would move the remainder of the consent calendar, with the exception of the item that was pulled.
Second.
All right, real call.
Councilmembers, Bratman.
Yes.
Varpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Satryan.
Yes. And so we'll take 4B?
4B.
Or we'll take the minutes?
Can we just note that councilmember Kasakian abstained from the minutes?
Okay. All right. So we'll take on 4B.
4B. 4B is Public Works Regarding Fiscal Year 2024-2025 SB1 Project List for Senate Bill 1, SB1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017, One Resolution Adopting the Fiscal Year 2024-2025 SB1 Project List, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017.
All right. Do you have a speaker?
Yes, we have several speakers on this item. Our first speaker is Hovik Avakian. We have three minutes.
Okay.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. I'm here on this project at Locust Center Avenue on the bike lane. We're back here again one more time. And there was a funding issue the last time you guys were talking about it, that you guys are seeking some funds because it was shortage on the $17, $18 million project. We live on Locust Center, and it's a direct impact to our family, to our daily life. So I would suggest, I have spoken to all the people on Locust Center Avenue. 50% of the people do not know the details of it. The other 50% think that they know, and they're objecting on it. So I would suggest if there's a possibility of revisiting the whole project on Locust Center Avenue about the bike lane one more time. One of the, already brought up the idea of doing a test project for a couple of weeks and see how the impacts the whole reduction of the lane. And because everybody is worried about the traffic, the congestion. Yes, there are people from the transportation set about 15 accidents in the whole year. But comparison to the other major streets, it's very similar to the others, if not less than the others. So my suggestion and my desire is to revisit this whole idea or at least do a test transaction for a couple of weeks before you guys jump into $17, $18 million cost for that bike lane on Locust Center. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is by Angela Javant.
Hello, hello, council. Thanks for hearing me this evening. I wanted to just speak in support of addressing some of the issues on Locust Center Avenue. As a resident and a parent, I'm very aware of the safety of our streets, especially navigating them around our schools. Fremont Elementary is there, and this project would include a traffic signal at an intersection that's very difficult to navigate and that endangers students and families who are commuting and have to participate and drop off on a daily basis. We know how many crashes happen on Locust Center Avenue, and it's concerning to me that there have been comments in this room that have suggested that those collisions are simply the cost of doing business when there are workable solutions that have been tested in many communities and that we know are the best options to improve the safety of our communities. Ultimately, we want to be able to navigate our streets, attend our schools, go to businesses, get home safely. All of us want that, and these are really common sense changes. It's worth investing in the safety of our families and community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Deborah Passakoff.
Good evening to the council members, and I want to congratulate you on pronouncing my last name correctly. That's not easy, so thank you. I am here to speak in favor of this project. I drive Locust Center very frequently from essentially the very top, up above Mountain Pine, to the very bottom where it merges with Verdugo and then Kenyatta Boulevard comes off of it. My children have multiple activities from swimming and Little League and other things that you drive your kids to that come off of Locust Center Boulevard. And so I've driven it a lot and at very different times a day. And I even drove it the full distance to come here tonight. And what I can say is there's not enough traffic coming down it that a center lane would make it harder for me to drive it. It would only make it easier because the only time that I've ever encountered traffic is because people are waiting to make what are currently dangerous left turns. And the safety of our children should be paramount. I think we all believe that Glendale should be a safe place, and I hope you will consider moving forward with the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Mohill.
Evening, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. I just turned 82 in 20 days. And I lived in Glendale since the age of 12. And I've driven with family, myself, up and down Locust Center Avenue for many, many, many years, and I've never encountered an accident. Something special? If you want to slow down traffic, the easiest thing to do is just have more law enforcement. That's it. Law enforcement. Give tickets. That'll stop people. It's a smokescreen for bicycle lanes, isn't it? It's another smokescreen for bicycle lanes. You don't need, we don't need bicycle lanes. You need more cops on the street giving traffic tickets. That will slow down the ta- All we think a cop has to do is put out his little meter and say, I got you. That'd be $200 for speeding. You don't need to tear up Locust Center Avenue for bike lanes. It's nonsense. And the people who live on Locust Center Avenue, where they going to park their cars? I was just on Brand Boulevard today to see my dentist. And when I got out, this is like about 11 o'clock in the morning, I looked up Brand and down Brand, and I saw one bicycle. And for that, you destroyed Brand Boulevard. Are you proud of yourself? And now you want to destroy the workings of Locust Center Avenue? Sure, there's always going to be someone, one or two, who say, hey, let's have bikes, bike lanes. But you think, why don't you do a real survey? Run the survey in Glendale News Press, run the survey Locust C V Weekly, run it in my newsletter, and ask people to fill out the questionnaire and see if they really want to have bicycle lanes. Or would they rather have cops on the street giving tickets to slow down the traffic? Thank you.
Our, we have three calls. Our first caller is Jeannie Murphy. Jeannie, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hello?
Jean?
Yeah.
Yep.
My name is Jeannae Murphy, and I am calling regarding the Locust Center Avenue Rehabilitation Project. You've heard from many stakeholder residents who have been negatively affected by this project or that will be negatively affected by this project. I'd like this council to reconsider the removal of traffic lanes and parking spaces and look into an alternative design. Perhaps putting a bike lane on one side of the road will work. In addition, there has not been any attempt at traffic calming measures. This project needs to be reviewed again. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Don Labrush. Don, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi, this is Don Labrush. I am like your first caller. I am at Locust Center at Manhattan right before Montrose. He said 50% of the residents on Locust Center weren't aware of this, and then many opposed. I've spoken to before, me personally canvassing. I've got 75% or more of the people were unaware of this project. Most oppose the removal of lanes when they find out about it. So outreach up here has not been good. If the folks down near Fremont, it seemed like some of them got organized on this. Up here, not so much. But at any rate, I agree that nothing has been done to try and lower speed but this. It's like we've tried nothing and it's not working. We can now legally lower the speed limit, and enforcement worked on Verdugo Road several years ago. The police wrote over 1,000 tickets. Traffic slowed, and it's continued to be slow. I am all for crosswalks, signals, pedestrian-controlled crosswalk. We're going to get it at Piedmont. But to remove these lanes, which is going to be permanent, there won't be room to, money to replace them, is a very big step. And I think before that happens, I had talked to Councilman Kasakian, who recommended a mock-up that should be done before a contract is signed. And you should really get feedback from all of the constituents, all of the taxpayers that are affected by this, not a small vocal minority, which is what you have now. And as the word spreads on this and more people become aware of it, they'll have the opportunity to weigh in. And we're all, we're all invested in this giant amount of tax money. And I don't think we should be using all of our SB1 money for this. I think it should be taken a better look at prior. That is it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next caller is Patrick Murphy. Patrick, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Good evening. I actually called to request that this be pulled from the consent calendar. One of the reasons is the lack of transparency in the agenda. I would appreciate more transparency, especially when $5 million plus is going to be spent on one project. I didn't realize that until I dug into the packet itself, the packet for the meeting this evening. It seems the spending should be spread throughout the city and that all of the money for SB1 for this coming fiscal year, the $5 million, should not be spent on one project, and that should be reconsidered. And I would appreciate the council's deliberation on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our final caller is Sarkis Metaboulian. Sarkis, you're on air. You have three minutes. Sarkis Metaboulian? We don't have the last caller online, so we're done with public comments.
All right. Looks like Councilmember Najarian has questions or comments.
Thank you. No, I do have some comments. I don't like this project. I don't like the road diet for the sake of putting in bicycle lanes. I don't think that there's, and you know, I've discussed this before. I think we have a better project for the SB1, which is more safety-related. That's our crossings at Doran, and that is the worst train crossing, at least in the southern half of the state. We have accidents there regularly, both vehicle, truck, and pedestrian. We have a plan in place to fix that. We shouldn't be putting this money into road repair when we can really put it in a place where lives are going to be saved. And that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Varpetian?
Yes, thank you. I think we need to look at this entire area and see what kind of a difference this project would make in that area. If you take the drive lanes out on Locust Center Avenue and take street parking out, slow down the traffic, create more traffic, then when you get to Verdugo, what happens? Then from Verdugo, you get to Kenyatta, what happens? Then from Kenyatta Boulevard, you get to Glendale Avenue, what happens then? Then are you going to take, if you want to take Glenox from there, what's going to happen there? How about Pennsylvania? How about New York? This notion that I want to drive in this area because I don't feel safe and I get to Verdugo, everything is perfect because Verdugo is a lot wider at that section than than Locust Center Avenue. I think the question that I have for staff is, and we have some police presence on Kenyatta Boulevard for last week or two. It slowed down everybody, and it's very effective. It's just one, one police officer, when you see them issuing a ticket, everybody slows down. So my question is, this $5 million, the way this project, I understand that this project was approved and budgeted for, and RFP was issued, and there was a contract that was going to be awarded. But we stopped the contract because we wanted to get more funding from Measure R funding, like $3 million, to basically allocate towards this project. So my question is, the way that this project has been funded in last year or so, in the last few months or so, is this $5 million and change part of it? The way we made our calculation is this SB1 gas tax. I want to emphasize on gas tax. This is when we, when we go to a gas station, you pay about 30 cents to 35 cents on every gallon you pump into your car. Half of that gas tax comes back to the city to improve the roads, not to take the drive lanes out. lanes out. Now, is this $5 million and change specifically spoken for this project? Is it part of our budget? Let's say if this $5 million didn't come in tomorrow, what happens to this project?
Councilmember Garpetian, we will have sufficient funding from other sources that could supplement whatever we have budgeted for in lieu of this $5 million. So the entire project will have sufficient funding if approved by council, and when we bring the recommendation to council to award the contract. This is the SB1, which is an additional gas tax. It's not the original excise tax. Will help us and relieve some of the funding that we have in the other gas tax to pay for
Other projects.
Other projects. But this Locust Center Avenue rehabilitation project, because of the scope of work, qualifies for an SB1 list.
Got it. So my other question is, is there a way to take a look at this project and see if you want to implement all the safety measures that's in there today? I asked this question. I want our Director of Public Works, or Mr. Hernandez, to maybe, or City Manager, to just answer this. If you have, the biggest issue that I have is people did not know that you're taking a traffic lane out, and you're taking the street parking out. They did not know about it. No one can say, "Oh, they didn't see it. They didn't read it." It wasn't even there. It wasn't even part of the report that you can see clearly that 20% or 18% or 22% of the street parking is being removed. So that's one of the biggest issues that I have with this. I'm not saying it was done purposely. What I'm saying, it wasn't there. So is there a way to look at this project and see if you can have our cake and eat it too? So not to take the traffic lane out, implement all the safety measures that we want to implement, the sidewalks, the traffic signals, everything else? And also have a bike lane on one side of the street? And see, how can we put this together so everybody is happy? I don't want to make people's lives miserable, because that place gets packed on rush hours. It gets packed on rush hours. Go there at four o'clock, five o'clock, even those two lanes are packed. One accident is one too many. I understand that. No one wants accidents. No one wants fatalities. No one wants injuries. But I think we need to look at this issue and see, because we owe it to the residents to make sure that they are part of this, this any decision we make. And taking a, removing a traffic lane on each side, I don't see it doing anything, because when you get to Verdugo, it's the same thing. What are we gonna do? Take the traffic lane from Verdugo, Cunyada, Glendale Avenue, Colorado, Broadway, Glenox? Is that the plan? I mean, that's unreasonable. That's not right. So my ask is to, while we're looking for that $3 million extra funding, to look into these issues, see if you can keep all the safety measures in, do not remove a traffic lane, and see if you can have a bike lane wide enough on one side that will accommodate two-way traffic for bikes.
Councilmember Garpetian, I understand your concerns and the public concerns. As a clarification, this item is to authorize us, the city, to submit Locust Center Avenue rehabilitation project for SB1 list to the state. This doesn't, this is not asking or intends to ask for a redesign or recommendation toward the contract, but I'll get to your question. So that's the intent of this item. Now, whether we change the design, whether we'll have bike lanes or not, whether there will be reconfiguration of the lanes, we can use this money to repave and rehabilitate Locust Center Avenue with or without reconfiguration. So this money will not be wasted. Right? So we have had the design completed, as you noted. We did get bids, and because of the amount of bids per line item that came in were higher than the ones that we had forecasted or estimated that relate to active transportation items, staff was able to determine that we can, and as you may recall, we can ask for additional Measure R monies that council approved to apply for through Metro. So that aside, we will, council also directed us to look into the possibility, feasibility, and the cost of implementing a quick build, if you will, a demonstration project on Locust Center. That item will come to council. We were planning on bringing it on July 9th, but I understand you're out of town, so we'll bring it on July 16th for your consideration. If council at the time gives direction to move forward with the demonstration project, we will do that. And at that time, council also give direction to change the design that had already been completed and that we have re-advertised for bits on it. And if, again, council direction is to look at a bike lane on one side and other changes that they may deem desirable to council and the community, if that's your direction, we'll go back and pay to have it redesigned. I hope that answers your questions.
Do you want a motion?
There's no more comments.
I mean, the way you explained it, that these funds will come in for this project, but it could be used just to pave the, let's say, you haven't done anything, you just paved the road. I'm okay with it that way. But we'll talk about this project when it comes back.
All right. I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Go call.
Councilmembers Brotman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Mayor Asachian?
Yes.
Next item?
Next, our City Council and staff comments.
Councilmember Brotman?
Want me to go first? Okay.
Oh, I have your name on here.
Oh, no, that was for this last one. But okay, I will. Let me just pull up my notes here. Actually, I think I was just gonna make three shout-outs. It's been, what, three weeks since we've met? So a lot's been happening in the city. But I wanted to mention that I attended a ribbon-cutting for Paperback Brewery's, and with the mayor here, Paperback Brewery's, what do you call it? Tasting Room, let's call it, on Artsakh. And just want everybody to know that we now have this new opportunity to go and taste one of our locally brewed beers. They've set up an arrangement with the Look Theater, so you can sit inside the room and actually use a QR code and order food, which will be hand-delivered from Look Theaters, so you can sit and have a pizza or whatever else they offer. It's a great place, fun, relaxing space, and I hope everybody can support our local business. And they do make very good beers. So that's one. Second thing is, I attended the, I think our fourth Repair Cafe event. It was at the Pacific Park Library, and I want to thank David Jones and team for organizing these events. I understand, and if people don't know what a Repair Cafe is, you basically bring in something that's broken. And there are all these people there who are called tinkers, who are just people that like to fix things. And there are also people there that will sew something that is torn, that you want sewn, they'll sharpen your knives, a few other things that they'll do. There was bike repair. I wish I had brought my bike, because it was a guy who was repairing bikes for free. But anyway, a lot of it is kind of items that people will tinker with, so to speak. So I brought in an old wine fridge that's been sitting around for years, not working. I didn't know why it wasn't working. Brought it in. Turns out, it was dust in the motor. The guy fixed it in about 15 minutes. And now I have basically a brand-new wine fridge. So 42 items, I'm told, were repaired, including my wine fridge. And that's 42 items that potentially are not gonna be going into the landfill. So it's really a wonderful community event. It's a wonderful way to learn, because I, you know, watched the guy do the repair, open up this thing, so I learned something. Hopefully, I can repair it the next time. And I think we're gonna have our next one. I forget where we're gonna have our next one. Does anybody know? Staff know? Maybe not. Anyway, well, this is the fourth one. They've been rotating them. So this one was at Pacific Park Library. They've had it at Spar Heights Community Center, I think. They've had one in Adams Square, Adams Hill Mini Park, I think. They move them around. So I don't know where the next one is, but it's about every three months. So look out for that. Anything you have, broken coffee maker, toaster, whatever it might be, hang on to it. Don't throw it away. Bring it over. And chances are, they'll be able to fix it, because they're pretty damn good. So just wanted to say that. And then the third thing is, I attended the Brand 52 Works on Paper. This is an annual, not an exhibit, what do you call it? It's like a juried exhibit, where, you know, artists submit works, and there is a group that evaluates them, decides what is gonna be included in the show, and there are other, you know, awards for different categories. Anyway, it was the biggest one I've seen as far as the public turnout. What was really interesting about it is somebody told me that Christopher Knight, who's the art critic for the LA Times, actually sent out a tweet saying that this was the number-one arts event in the, in Los Angeles area for that weekend, right here in Glendale. So we're doing some good things at the Brand Library. We're putting Glendale on the map as an arts destination. I want to thank staff and whoever, the Brand associates, whoever else was involved in putting this show together. It was really tremendous. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Garpetian?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I want to thank everyone who, it's a small thing, but it makes a huge difference. The water fountain in the City Hall, it's operating again, and it looks really good. It's, the sound is really relaxing. The sound of waterfall, to me, it's very, very relaxing. It's very nice. And I think it's part of the, this property is a historic property, and part of that historic component is that water fountain when it's operating. One quick question for City Manager. I was asked to ask, what is the status of those lamp posts in North Glendale and Ross? I'll finish, then maybe you can answer them. And happy belated Father's Day, everybody. I mean, we talk about anything and everything except fathers. What happened to us? No celebration day, no celebration hour, no commendation, no proclamation. What happened to us, guys?
Did you do it when you were mayor?
You know?
You don't count.
Guy did, yeah. We, what happened to us? I think, I wanna, yeah, I wanna put humor in everything we do in life. Life is too short. Happy Father's Day to everyone. All the men who go out every day, work hard, work in rough environment, most of them work long hours to come home and take care of their families. I wanna thank all of the fathers who really are there every day, day in, day out, for their families. It's very important to me. So happy Father's Day. Hopefully, for, we will have a day or a week or something, a celebration in Verdugo Park or something for fathers, and we can get together and enjoy our stories about our families. With that, I think, but I'm serious about having something for fathers, for Father's Day. I think it's important. And maybe another month, because, or whatever, this month, next month, the following month, maybe, maybe, that's a hint to you, Madam Mayor.
You're beating me to these things. I'm just gonna wait. So, all right.
Anyways, all the restaurants, by the way, they all had availabilities. That was interesting. Wherever you called, "Oh, yeah, come on in right now. There's no reservations," unlike Mother's Day. You have to call three weeks ahead to reserve a spot for your dinner. But anyways, these are all, you know, as I said, I like to put humor in everything we do. Life is too short. We have to be kind to each other, and we have to be really handle our business in a professional manner. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So if you can.
Councilmember Garpetian, how about celebrating Father's Day?
How about it? Yeah?
So on the light poles, GWP Electric has completed their survey. They know which one they need repainting. They have determined a spec for the paint. They're in the process of hiring a contractor. I will send you all an email with more detail when I receive it.
Yeah, because somehow, you know, they had rust, and they were rather what have you. Okay. Thank you so much.
I'm glad to hear that about the light posts. I know I've been hearing about it as well. So hopefully, that gets done, and we can make the area look a little spruced up, with a little bit of polish. Happy belated Father's Day to everyone as well. Some of us like to just be left alone on Father's Day. So for those who do want all the attention, happy Father's Day. Some of us just want to fly under the radar that day and not be given any chores or tasks and come out of the other end of it. I want to say how exciting it is to be back here in these chambers. It's been a while. I was away on a assigned trip to Canada through an organization called the ACYPL, the American Council for Young Political Leaders, which works with our U.S. Department of State to build stronger relations between our nation and other countries in the world. Delegations are comprised of six individuals plus an escort. This, I had the honor and privilege of being asked to represent our country back in 2012, when I was sent to South Africa and Namibia on an exchange. And this time, I was asked to escort a delegation of amazing individuals representing the states of Oklahoma, Kansas, Louisiana, Ohio, Washington, D.C. And who am I forgetting? I hope I remember, and I don't forget everyone. But it was an incredible delegation of individuals, and, oh, and Nevada, and Nevada. And we had an opportunity to visit three different cities in, we flew to Washington, D.C., visited three different cities in Canada, met with representatives of the Prime Minister, had the opportunity to sit in on a session of the parliament, where the Prime Minister and his ministers were being questioned. Unfortunately, the Prime Minister wasn't there that day. Prime Minister Trudeau was in Normandy for the anniversary of D-Day. We had opportunities to meet with local officials, and it was interesting to see the similarities between the challenges and challenges that all of us face in different cities. So I just wanted to let folks know. And initially, I was supposed to be there on, at least by June 3rd. Unfortunately, getting a flight made it such that I had to be there on June 2nd. So I was going to meet, miss the June 4th meeting regardless. And then our return date was June 12th from Canada, flying into Washington, D.C., and the very next morning, flying back to be reunited with my family and with all of you as soon as possible. So that was the reason for my absence. I thank you all for holding down the fort while I'm gone, and I look forward to voting to approve the budget, since that was probably the most exciting thing that I missed while I was gone. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Happy Father's Day, everyone. And I do agree, we should have an, oh, Ara, oh.
I didn't put my name.
Yeah, maybe not his name. All right. Well, happy Father's Day to everyone. I think I talk about my dad a lot, and the impact that he's had on my life. And I know that that is true for most fathers who dedicate that time to their children. And I would all be up for some sort of barbecue at the park, Mr. Garpetian, for Father's Day, or around Father's Day, that the city hosts. And so a couple of things on mine, the Paperback Tasting Room on Artsakh, one of the things that we kind of jokingly talked about, but if there is an opportunity, I'd like for us to look into it. You have the opportunity to have the beer on the sidewalk, but then when you step off that sidewalk into the space where there are no cars, you're not allowed to have it. I don't know if it's like state law, that won't allow for us to have it there, but it is an enclosed area. If there's an opportunity for people to enjoy a beer while sitting at those tables, I'd like for us to take a look at that. And then I was also absent. I had mentioned this before I left, but I was on a this before I left, but I was on a delegation trip to Armenia. It was the first of its kind, organized by the U.S. State Department. We had representatives from places like Michigan and Montana and Kansas. There were several sister city memorandums of understanding signed during that forum. As a matter of fact, the Deputy Secretary of State actually joined the forum. We had opportunities to talk about our own practices. I covered sustainability and some of our codes and permitting processes, as well as opportunities for exchange with our sister cities. Had the opportunity to meet with and travel to Kapon, which is about five hours away from the city center. And then Gumri, as well as met with Gentron, which is a friendship city or some sort of memorandum of understanding. I've asked each of our sister cities to give us a list of things that they want. One of the main things, and I've talked a lot about this during the afternoon session, but was just experts in building and codes, planning, public works. There's a lot of opportunities in Gumri and Kapon specifically. And I look forward to establishing some of those sister associations so we can get the ball rolling. And I would like to organize a delegation trip with our city and officials at some point this year, perhaps closer to the end of the year, to take the experts and have that exchange. Also had the opportunity to meet with the women's visitor and meet with the leadership of the Women's Center there. I would have to say that they went from having to service about 50 women a year to 1,500. And the comments were that it's not that domestic violence has increased in Armenia, it's that culture has started shifting, and women are actually seeking help and assistance, which is also an opportunity for us to create some bonds between YWCA. They also did mention that police, an opportunity for training with our police department with theirs in how to respond to domestic violence would be really important, and something that's needed. And I'm looking forward to us doing those exchanges. So in the coming weeks, I'll be scheduling some Zooms with city staff and as a follow-up to some of the items that we discussed. But I would also like to mention that part of this trip included having the Director of California Governor's Office of Planning and Research, as well as the State Department's Special Representative for Commercial and Business Affairs, Sarah Morgenthau. I've invited both of them to visit Glendale. There's a lot of opportunity for economic development and funding for sustainability and other projects that we can tap into. It looks like they're doing it with other cities. I know Mr. Asafai is going to be in Pasadena in a couple of weeks, so I invite him to join us here. And I look forward to figuring out how, what kind of resources we can bring to our city. And actually, exchange, economic exchanges between Armenia and here. So I think that's all I have. So with that, are there, oh, Councilmember Najarian?
Thank you. Just one, just one item. I, well, two, we opened up the Montrose.
Oh, yes. It's been, yeah.
What do we call that? The?
Substation. Police substation.
Very nice location to help out with any sort of issues that occur in Montrose. It won't be staffed 24/7, but for a lot of the time, there will be a police officer or two there, ready to serve the community. So I got, I was contacted by a member of the community who really wanted my help. And of course, I said, well, how can I help you? What's your problem? This person said that the person is a member of a group that suffers heart attacks more than the average. That that person is a member of a group that suffers strokes greater than the average. He said, I let it out now. The person said that he's a member of a group with a lower life expectancy than the average. The person said that he's a member of a group that has higher blood pressure. That person said he's a member of a group that has higher rates of obesity, higher rates of alcoholism, higher rates of drug addition, drug addiction, higher rates of dropout from school, lower graduation rates from high school, lower college graduation rates, and lower enrollment in community colleges and universities. The person said that his group is injured on the job in a far greater rate than the general population, and that members of his group are killed in our wars at a much higher rate. That person is a man. And all of the men in the city of Glendale suffer from these very serious, life-threatening issues. I'd like council to discuss this issue and see what we think a way forward is to help in all these matters. Health, education, job safety, addiction, all these things. They're very serious. We can't ignore it anymore, and let's not ignore it. And just because that person is a man, and we're joking about Father's Day, and there's a little bit of truth in that, there's no reason to ignore that. And I'd like to get a second from someone on council to have a discussion to see what the city council can do to help in these issues. I don't want to call it a men's commission, because I'm against creating more commissions or giving commissions more power. But I think there's something we should do that are specifically related to the issues that men have, biological men, if I can go that far. It's serious, and we shouldn't ignore it.
I don't know if we need a second or not, but.
Yeah, you do.
You don't need a second, Councilmember Najarian.
We'll put it on.
If you do.
We have to get that, and then we jump through the hoops.
And if you do, I'll second it. If you don't, but you can schedule it.
Okay. Alright.
Councilwoman Najarian, I think you bring very valid points that need to be addressed. And perhaps even if, if there's some sort of report from our community services and parks on if we do have any kind of programming, I think even before that item comes. Well, you know, I mean, I don't know what, what kind of educational materials and what we do on these things. So, and if we have any partnerships, but those are all valid points. Alright, next item.
Next item is community event announcements, three minutes each, five speaker limit per mayor policy. This item also permits speakers wishing to speak under general or oral communications. Subject to the three-minute time limit, discussion is limited to matters not on the agenda. Mayor Asatrian, we have a number of cards and one caller. So our first, our first public comment for this section is Ray Shelton.
It is. If you don't have the ovaries, resign.
Mr. Shelton, please.
As a proud gay man, I'm here to tell you that it is entirely inappropriate for any government body to issue proclamations in support of any form of human sexuality. If you do so, you end up with the farce of the Silver Lake City Council congratulating itself recently for removing several local no-U-turn signs claiming that such signs targeted gay Americans. In their news release, the Silver Lake City Council purposely omitted that the no-U-turn restriction applied only from midnight to 6:00 a.m. in the morning. Why? Because the signs were initially installed to prevent men from driving back and forth in local neighborhoods in a quest for anonymous sex in the back of cars with other men. The signs targeted sex perverts, not gay Americans. Your proclamations, you end up with the leader of the LGBTQ Diversity Council of the Maryland Democrats, a pedophile named Michael K. Penn, being arrested for attempting to meet up for anonymous sex with a 14-year-old boy. Glendale City Council must stop enabling sex crimes and pedophilia with a sickening inclusive pride proclamations. None of you who sit up there are gay. None of you, especially you, fake mayor Ellen, speak for real gay men or real gay women. The truth is that the majority of this city council are groomers. You have allied yourself with sex perverts, drag queens, groomers, and pedophiles. You should be ashamed of yourself. You do not represent me or any real gay American.
Our next speaker is Mike Mohill. Mike, you have three minutes.
Evening, councilmembers. Name is Mike Mohill. I'm going to talk about a few different things. First, announcements. You know, I find it very interesting, this thing with the fixed, the repair stuff, an arts event. I hear about it after the fact, after the fact. What doesn't this council instruct the city manager to put these important announcements in the local newspapers or my community newsletter? With me, it's free. And I have thousands of readers, local readers. And if you want to have more participation of the people in Glendale, make the public announcements. Make an announcement on the city website. How many people read the city website? Very, very few. So let's be real. Father's Day, it should be longer than one day, Councilman Partan. It should be a whole goddamn month. It should either be the month of June or July. I'm not sure which one we should make it. But after all, I think fathers are more important than the gay community and the LGBTQ XYZ community. Because straight men create babies. Gay men, well, we won't go there, okay? But straight men and straight women create babies, not transgender people. Let's celebrate Heterosexuality Month, not this thing called June Month. It's not, it's so goddamn political, it makes me disgusted. Now, another subject matter. This morning, I went to the dentist, I brought it up briefly, to have my teeth cleaned. Actually, I happened to crown put in. And when I stepped out on Glend, on Brand Boulevard, I just looked up and down where all the bike lanes were, and I saw one bike rider at 11:00 in the morning. One bike rider. Not a dozen and one, but one. I went in to see the receptionist, where I have my crown with the dentist's office. I said, Evelyn, tell me, has things improved since they had the bike lanes? She says, no, Mr. Moh, we've already complained to the city. I said, how about the parking situation? How many, how many stalls have lost? I said, you lose like about 10 or 15? She says, no, more like a closer to 40. There are fewer people able to park on Brand Boulevard, Mr. Brodmann. You should be happy. Mr. Brodmann, you should be very, very happy to push this bike lanes. Ain't nothing terrible about the back lanes. It shouldn't be a political thing. It shouldn't be a Democrat or Republican. It's called common sense. I remember the last time this older lady came here, and said, what stupid people thought about this thing called bike lanes? I said, ooh, this lady's something else. There should be no bike lanes on Glendalk's Boulevard?
Thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Your time is up. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Arus Petrosian.
And Ms. Petrosian has, I see her walking up with someone who will translate. She's been instructed as to how long she may be able to address the council for. Okay. Add the necessary time for the translation, and you may instruct her to begin.
Hello, council. Asking you, and I'm begging from you, I'm here for my sister's daughter. Her husband is currently in the hospital. He is paralyzed on one side of his body. She has applied to various locations for assisted living, whether that's Broadway or any other apartment that are available, but she has not gained anything. I'm here begging you and asking if you could please assist us in any possible way. I'm asking from you, and I'm begging you, please. I've been living here in this country for about 35 years, and this is the only thing that I want.
Alright, well, I will. Thank you. Is there anything else you would like to add?
That's all.
Will you instruct her that someone from staff will get her contact info?
She lives on a second-floor apartment, and she is unable to go up and down the stairs.
Thank you. Please instruct, thank you.
Her name is Arak Nazarotunyan. I'm asking and begging from you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time. And then if I can ask staff to please get any contact information and pass it along to the staff in our city manager's office so they can put her in touch with any agencies or anyone that could possibly be. I will. Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bill Kontos. Bill, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hello. Thank you for the chance to address you. My name is Bill Kontos. I have been a resident of Glendale for 27 and a half years. I've never actually felt strongly enough about a local issue to come and address you in, in any way, and I appreciate the chance to do so. There have been traffic, things going on. As a resident, I, like other citizens, work to, you know, go along with these things. But I live next to North Brand, and I have seen this whole process and this reconstruction. And this is the first thing that has motivated me to tell you what a poorly planned, poorly executed, poorly thought-out, and damaging project this is. I truly do not know why this project was even initiated. I've been told many varying things. I've been told that it was because there were speed issues. I agree with several people who have spoken earlier in this meeting that the only real deterrent for that is police presence. And I've seen that in 27 years of Glendale, that there are streets, when there is visible police presence and forcing speed limits, speed goes down. If it's pedestrian safety, I don't see how any of this, you know, would benefit. The parking reconfiguration is strange. The spots are narrow. It creates incredible visual hazards for both the people going in and out of spots. The spots are too narrow. The bike lanes aren't, aren't helpful. There also is not a coordination of visibility between the bike lanes and the way that the pedestrians are supposed to cross, the way that the people making the right turns are. supposed to go onto the other streets. I've also been told that these barriers with the frankly bizarre colors, orange and pink and everything, are specifically designed and specifically proven to cause people to drive slower and more thoughtfully because of the stimulation on the side. But I have seen at all times of the day how people have responded to this with tension, and it has caused traffic delays. It has not caused people to behave more rationally. I've watched people do very strange things due to the impatience of being forced to travel so much slower. I've seen traffic jutting out into Glendale and Brand, causing backup beyond those intersections. I really feel like this is a very, very crucial project because Glendale is a unique city in LA. It's a combination of old and new. Brand Boulevard is kind of the crown jewel of that, that ethic. It was specifically designed to be wide. It specifically served a purpose that when you got off the freeway, that you suddenly went from that to just a little bit of.
Thank you, Bill. You're out of time.
Thank you, Mr. Cantos. Appreciate your call. Next?
Next is Fernando Roldan. Fernando, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. Once again, thank you so much for allowing me to speak with you. You know, speaking of events, the one thing I'd like to see Glendale more in terms of is, there are two things coming up. First of all, July is also the month of the America, the creation of the America's Fifth Disabilities Act on July 26th. I asked every proclamation, we honor the rights of people with disabilities on, during that month, or near the ADA, the day of the ADA. Also, October is also Disability Awareness Month. So I would ask that, and I still continue to ask the mayor and members of the council to please create a disability advisory committee to help inform the mayor and the committees about such things, especially now that since everybody's talking about these projects and all. I have to say, those barriers are also not good, for one reason, because I've already seen firsthand that, as an example, on Saturday, we were driving off some ladies over at Incarnation Catholic Church on Brand and Glendale Oaks, and there was a barrier. So where does a van like access services pick up and drop off people? That needs to be arranged. That needs to be fixed. So I'm asking my mayor and my council to please talk with people before, or before creating any projects like what happened in Brand, or what's going to happen in Locust and that, to please talk with the general public. Do not just do it just because. I'm asking staff and mayor and the council to talk with everybody about this. That's my two cents on that. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, members of the council.
Thank you, and that was the last caller.
Madam Mayor, while we're on the topic of announcements, I do want to mention that because we're dark next week, and we will be celebrating our nation's independence, Crescent Valley fireworks will be having their fireworks show on Thursday. Tickets are available. You can go to cvfireworks.com to purchase them. It's one of the longest ongoing fireworks shows in our area, the de facto Glendale Independence Day celebration. So please check that out. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is that it? All right, next item.
Next item is adoption of ordinances. A. Item A is Glendale Water and Power regarding Glendale Water and Power Electric Revenue Bonds 2024 Second Series, introduced by Najarian on 5/21/2024. One ordinance authorizing the issuance by the city of not to exceed $230 million, aggregate principal amount of the City of Glendale Electric Revenue Bonds 2024 Second Series payable out of the Electric Works Revenue Fund and approving certain other actions in connection therewith. Two, resolution authorizing the invitation of bids for the purchase of electric revenue bonds 2024 Second Series, approving a notice of intention to sell bonds, a preliminary official statement, a notice inviting bids, an official bid form, authorizing the publication of a notice of intention to sell bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of a final official statement, a ten supplement to the indenture of trust, a continuing disclosure agreement, and authorizing the award of the bonds.
I'll move the ordinance and the resolution if there's no.
Councilman Karpetian had a comment to make.
I'm going to. Thank you, Councilman. I cannot support this, this bond issuance. I know that this project is, it's on its way, but I do have a huge issue the way this project was redesigned, downsized, and especially going from five engines to three, as well as putting the city in a position that you can only obtain 14% air permit, and basically you can use your engines on a reserve mode, and you cannot use anything more than that. This project was designed in the beginning to be able to generate some funds and pay for, for itself, if you will. And this $32 million today, 32 million, and it's going to end up $42 million a year. This is something that my children cannot pay for. And I hope that we can, we can also revisit this, this, this project in the, in the future, hopefully near future, to make sure that it's reliable, and it's affordable, and it could, it could do what it was originally designed to do. Also, since the IRP is part of this entire equation, and the IRP that was designed in December, that was also changed to what we have today, and we were late in, my understanding is that we were late in submitting it. And many of the items, they are really nice to have there, but they're unreal. They're not achievable. And the only thing that is real in that IRP is, at the end, it says, if everything that we have in there does not happen, then we can follow the state's guidelines. I think that's the only real item in there. The rest of it, if we can achieve it, more power to everyone. I know Burbank changed theirs, and City of LA is changing theirs. But again, in a, in a bright conscience, I know it's a little bit late in the, in the game, but I cannot support this, this bond issuance.
All right. Well, I mean, I'll make a quick comment as well. I haven't voted for the previous ones, along with the rate increases, so I would not be supporting this. I was going to just abstain from it. All right. We have a motion in a second.
Madam Mayor, we need to take the ordinance first and have the vote on that, and then take the resolution second. So it'd be 7A1, first, the ordinance.
All right. We have a motion in a second for that.
Well, I have a question. What if we don't get three votes on this?
You need a majority vote.
And what's the impact of not approving these bonds?
We have our GWP representatives.
Councilmember Najarian will not be able to apply to, to have the second tranche of the bonds issued, and basically have to put a pause on the project.
And when is the deadline for it?
For August, I believe, yeah. We're applying for it in August.
Apply in August?
Yes. For the second tranche, and the next, the next, the third and last will be August of 2025.
So a pause on the project means a delay in the completion of the electrical generating units?
Absolutely.
Which could mean blackouts in the city, a greater risk of blackouts in the city?
Definitely.
Well, I think the only responsible thing to do is vote for it, even though I was, I was, I fought the three generators versus the five more than anyone else on this council. I think for the good of the community, I have to vote yes. So would you like a motion on the ordinance first? Was that your point, Madam?
Yes, that's correct.
I'll move the ordinance. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Brotman?
Yes.
Karpetian?
No.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Satrian?
No. Oh, actually, abstain. My apologies.
And I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Brotman?
Yes.
Karpetian?
No.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Satrian?
Abstain. Next item?
Next are action items. Action item A, Information Technology Department regarding resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing a citywide low voltage cabling services agreement extension. One, resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing to process an amendment to the existing voice and data network cabling contact, contract with WILSS Communications contract number 8001996, extending duration of the contract by three years until February 15, 2028, and increasing the not-to-exceed amount by $749,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $799,000.
All right, Mr. Colonia?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we're just going to go directly to Jason Miller, our Assistant Chief Information Officer, for presentation on this item and the next item, when it comes up.
Welcome, Mr. Miller.
Good evening, Mayor Satrian, members of council. We're here to discuss the recommendation to amend the city existing contract with WILSS Communications for low voltage cabling services. This amendment will, is critical to continue the high quality of services for essential Low voltage cabling is the backbone for, of our city's communication and security systems. It is essential to everything from data transfers, phone calls, security cameras, and alarm systems. A reliable infrastructure is not just convenient, it's a necessity for efficient operations to our city. WILSS Communication has been an invaluable partner to the City of Glendale over the decade. Their track record is impeccable and consistently high-quality work and deep understanding of specific needs. They have a proven ability to deliver results time and time again. While we adhere to a competitive bidding process, there are several compelling reasons to make an exception for the amendment of this current contract. WILSS is an in-depth, WILSS' in-depth knowledge of our infrastructure is critical to the upcoming Police Arctic Project and the wireless expansion project. Their proven performance, specialized knowledge, and unique experience working within our facilities makes an ideal insured, seamless, efficient, and cost-effective service. The estimated cost of the three-year contract amendment is 749,000. We have already secured funding for the first two years through our real-time intelligence center and Wi-Fi expansion facility and facilities projects. Fundings for the remaining years will be addressed in future budget discussions, ensuring responsible and planned approach. Based on WILSS' exceptional track record, the Information Technology recommends the city council approve the amendment of the existing contract with WILSS Communication. This will allow us to move forward with critical infrastructure projects and ensure continued reliability of our essential communication and security systems. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
No questions.
Thank you for the very quick report. Do we have a motion?
I'll move the item 8B1.
Second.
8A1, competitive bidding.
All right.
8B.
8B. No.
8A.
I'm sorry, 8A.
I'll move 8A. Apologies.
That's what I thought.
All right, second?
Second.
All right. Roll call.
Councilmembers Brotman?
Yes.
Karpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Satrian?
Yes. Next item?
Next item is 8B, Information Technology Department regarding standardization of information technology infrastructure. One, a resolution and dispensing with competitive bidding establishing Cisco Systems, Microsoft, and Palo Alto Networks as the city's standard information technology infrastructure manufacturers, and authorizing the Deputy Director of Finance purchasing to procure related software, hardware, parts, maintenance, and services.
Madam Mayor? Yes, I need to recuse from this item because I have shares in Cisco Systems, so I'll step in the back.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
I'll try to make this more exciting, you know? I know the IT stuff is always at the greatest things to talk about.
IT stuff can be very exciting, Mr. Miller.
Well, Mayor Satrian, council members, today we're here to discuss Glendale can evaluate its cybersecurity infrastructure by partnering with industry leaders, technology providers like Cisco, Microsoft, and Palo Alto Networks. Technology standardization is about the holistic integrated approach. By standardizing our systems with these trusted vendors, we can simplify our IT environment, reduce the vulnerabilities, and make security management more efficient. This streamlined approach to our, not only, the streamlined approach not only strengthens our defenses against cyber threats, but also optimizes our resource and enhancement overall infrastructure.
You knew this was going to happen.
Yeah, it's always, you know.
You knew this was going to happen.
I set it up.
Do we need tech support?
I got the best partner in crime. HOGUP's doing a great job. Dynamic duo we have here. All right. So Cisco provides essential networking equipment that keeps the cities connected from our offices to our Wi-Fi in our parks and our libraries. This strong foundation means reliable internet access, smooth operation for city staff, and improved communication for emergency services. Microsoft software automation helps us, our city employees, work together seamlessly and manage information efficiently. Their security tools also act as a digital watch guard, keeping our data safer from bad actors and cyber threats. Palo Alto is our first line of defense, protecting the city against online attacks. Their technology stops cyber threats before they can harm the city or its systems and stay, keeps us protected and secure. By embracing these partnerships, Glendale can enhance city services, empowering employees, engaging residents, and protect critical infrastructure, and positions itself for as a smarter, safer, and more connected future. While the City of Glendale has many offerings from these companies, we believe there's a tremendous opportunity to further enhance our infrastructure and cybersecurity posture. By integrating products like Cisco, Microsoft, and Palo Alto Networks, we can achieve efficient and repeatable deployments of new technology, streamlining our security management processes, and strengthening our threat detection and responsible capabilities to ensure consistent compliance with industry best practices. Today, we are seeking approval to authorize Cisco, Microsoft, and Palo Alto Networks as city standards, which will allow us to fully utilize these vendors and deliver services to City of Glendale. That is the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? All right. Do I have a motion?
I move 8B. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Brotman?
Karpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Satrian?
Yes. Next item?
Next item would be...
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
8C.
Yes. Next item would be 8C, Finance, Regarding Fiscal Year 2024-25 Citywide Budget Adoption, Continued from June 4, 2024 Council Meeting. One, Resolution Adopting the Fiscal Year 2024-25 City of Glendale Budget. Two, Resolution Establishing Certain Fees and Increasing/Decreasing/Modifying Certain Fees for Various Services Provided by the City and Adopting Changes to the Comprehensive Citywide Fee Schedule for Fiscal Year 2024-25. Three, Resolution Establishing Certain Fees and Increasing/Decreasing/Modifying Certain Existing Fees for Public Works, Community Development, and Fire-Related Services Permits and Certificates. Four, Resolution of Appropriation for Fiscal Year 2023-24 to Transfer Funds and the Amount of $10 Million from the General Fund to the Capital Improvement Fund.
All right. Do we have comments?
Yes. May I, council member?
Of course.
Council members and mayor, just to make a couple of comments and a quick summary. As you know, staff made a full presentation on June 4, after having conducted four separate budget study sessions where we received valuable input, responded to a number of questions, and generated a follow-up list that will bring forward items on that follow-up list to council in the next 12 months. And at the time, the mayor made a recommendation suggested and council agreed to have it postponed for voting until such time that we had full council. But I'll just provide a quick summary. The proposed fiscal year budget 24-25 is a total of $1.2 Billion, of which $325.7 Million is in the general fund. Based on this proposed revenues and appropriations, I'm submitting a balanced budget with a projected surplus of $591,000 and a reserve of 38%. In addition, the city has completed a citywide user fee study, and the recommendations are presented for adoption of the amendments to the citywide fee schedule. Lastly, there is a resolution of appropriation to transfer $10 Million in anticipated current fiscal year year-end surplus from the general fund to the capital improvement fund for the Central Park Project to secure grant funding. With that, I recommend adoption of the four resolutions as it was read into the record, and we are available to staff to respond to any questions you may have.
Madam Mayor, procedurally, I have a question for our attorney. Can these all be moved in one motion?
Yes, they can.
Okay.
So...
I'll move them all.
Well, I was gonna ask for it to be separated, but go ahead, make a comment and then...
I'm sure all of us received comments about the appeals to planning commission and city council fees that is being increased from $2,000 to $4,562. I mean, my recommendation would be to keep that at as 2,000, not increase it, because we are decreasing other fees, and there's no, this may deter people from even thinking about looking into projects and appealing or what have you. I think that that fee should stay $2,000.
Mayor Sotrin and members of council, Councilmember Garpetian, just a point of clarification, actually, that $2,000 fee is a subsidized fee. The actual true cost recovery amount was over $6,500. So council, previous councils had decided to keep it at 2,000. That was a subsidy. With the streamlining that our planning division had gone through the process, they've been able to reduce that actual true cost to $4,900 or $4,600. And so that's actually a decrease from previous true cost, but if it's council direction to maintain that subsidy, we'll take that direction from council.
Well, if I may, before we move forward with that, during the last budget session, I talked about the fees and wanting to like take a deeper dive into the fees, because there's 1,500 fees that are included in there. I don't know if staff gave any briefings to any of my colleagues, but I know I got one. That was kind of my compromise in trying to understand where we stand. There are several areas for me that are of concern. I understand that some of these subsidies that have been implemented were due to recommendations from previous council, and that we don't really actually have a city policy like many other cities do with respect to what we want to subsidize and what we don't. Going through, even like the 1,500, I wouldn't be able to go through the fees and be able to identify what they are. So my request is that, I know that you're gonna be bringing this chunk of it back, but for the record, I do wanna read off the areas that I'm interested in for us to look at. I made the comments during the last budget session on this, but for me, I think as it pertains to the inflation that we're seeing and the construction costs that have been going up, anything that deals with single-family home renovations or smaller projects that have to do with our planning and building and safety permits, as well as our Glendale Water and Power permits, and anything that impacts our small businesses as defined as a small business. And what I specifically said to staff was, I also want us to look at bundles of things, because you can be going through a small renovation project for your home, and that would require a certain number of permits. So when we look at the fees, it may be that, oh, this permit only is like increasing by 100 bucks, and that one's increasing by 200 bucks, and the other one's increasing by 50 bucks, and then Glendale Water Power permits increasing whatever. But then the bundle of that, just that one small thing, ends up being thousands of dollars for residents and our small businesses. So those are really the three, four areas that I'm looking forward to. I think as we talk about the appeal, one of my issues, and I've voiced this time and again, is that the appeal process is also sometimes used by affluent community members to deter construction. I think the number, just in the last year and a half, the number of appeals that we've seen that have had no grounds for it. I think what I would like to do with that is actually safeguard low-income or lower-income bracket community members. So if there is an opportunity for us not to necessarily subsidize that fee, actually, but create an opportunity for those that are falling into that lower-income bracket to be able to still appeal, is something that I'm looking for in that particular line item. You know, again, it's, we've been talking about as like, a lot of these appeals that have come through when I've been on council have been used as a delay tactic. Time and again, staff has said like there's no grounds for it, but the opportunities are there, and I just wanna make sure that, you know, we come up maybe even a system that looks at how appeals are taken. But again, I wanna be able to, it looks like it is subsidized already, but I would like it to be part of that package that's coming back. I don't wanna start pulling fees now, because I think that's unfair to what I was trying to do last week, and this was my compromise.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that, but this report didn't tell me that previous years it was $6,500 or $6,800. Now you're going down to 45, from 2,000 to 4,500, but I didn't know that it was 6,500 or 6,800, and we're proposing 4,500. But nonetheless, if the fees are coming back to, we reviewed, is that the case?
Looking for policies.
If I may, Mayor Sotrin and members of city council, follow up to the mayor's comments. We plan on bringing the report to council to establish a cost recovery policy that, you are correct, we don't have in place. Over the years with previous councils, it was really arbitrary, arbitrarily being asked or directed staff to subsidize certain fees, depending on the nature of the fees and impact to the community members and the residents, and for example, users of our parks and community centers, et cetera. With the current proposed fee schedule, we actually have a $3.9 Million subsidy that has lasted over the years, or in the opinion of department heads, it was befuddling to provide those subsidies. Of the 300, 1,300 fees actually that we have, and we did go through briefings with every council member, it's obviously quite impossible to go through every single fee, but we have looked at bundles of fees, and we have provided comments as to how many number of fees have been deleted, how many have been increased, how many have been eliminated. So the plan is to bring a report back, a comprehensive report back, and for once, establish a policy driven by council based on your priorities as to what areas you'd like to see subsidies in. And with that, we can move forward and put these in place. Recommendation is to move forward with the fee schedule, the amendments to the fee schedule. Otherwise, we'll have an impact of 5.4 Million to the budget. And in the next few months, as we gather all this information and we bring you the report with the mid-year budget update, then you'll have an opportunity to establish that policy and set the direction for subsidies based on your priorities. That would include the appeal fee.
So I stated this during the briefing and during the last meeting. Our internal cap is from 20, it's 35%. We're now at 38% reserves, which leaves about $7 Million. And if we were to not do that, not to the, not increase the fee schedule, then we have an opportunity to grab from there. I'm not in a place where I'm gonna be supporting the fee schedule today. I'm looking forward to seeing the policies and what's in place. I'm happy to vote for the budget. I think there's opportunities for us to, you know, I don't know why we're at 38% reserves at this point. That more than covers, but I don't wanna vote for fees and then come back and say, well, okay, now let's like reverse back, so.
With all due respect, I would, again, highly recommend we move forward with the fees. Now it's up to council and mayor, whichever way you'd like to vote on. But that will have a triple ripple effect. It's not just one year, not one year of savings that will pay for it, but as you have seen in the forecast, it will have ripple effects. And you have seen the output for the outer years that is quite significant, and it's gonna create a shortfall. Again, we have a $3.9 Million in subsidies that we are recommending as part of the fee schedule, and any additional significant impacts, like the $5.9 Million, like I said, is going to have significant impacts on the five-year forecast. So I would recommend to move forward with it, have it adopted, and we'll come back with the mid-year budget update. And you may choose to reverse some of the subsidies that have been in place. But due to the lack of the policy we have in place, it could be any arbitrary fee schedule or item that you pick and choose.
So just for clarification purposes, Mr. Galanian, I'm not looking for, I'm not looking to do away with the increase in general, because I also understood from staff that if we delay it, then the increase is gonna be much larger in the coming years. What I am looking for is for us to be able to, as we're increasing fees, for us to keep in mind the areas that I am particularly interested in, and ensuring that those are not heavily impacting our residents or our small businesses. And this was something that I had communicated to you.
Mayor Sotrin, not to be argumentative, but that is true, and that's what I had responded back with, is that we, the best practice would be to move forward. We have not done a fee study update since 2019. We had put it on hold the last time, on hold. The last time we did was in 2014, that it was a citywide comprehensive study. So we have lagged all these years, to your point, with inflation, cost of inflation. This is full cost recovery. We're not making a profit out of this. And so it has to come out of somewhere, and it's gonna have an impact, and it's gonna create shortfalls and ripple effects on the outcome of the five-year forecast.
So I hear you. I recognize what you're saying. I also think that the subsidies in this fee schedule are based on previous council's policies. We, I said this during the last meeting, we've only had one session where these fees were actually discussed, right? And so I'm not comfortable with moving forward and putting my vote behind something that I don't believe, specifically for those areas that I mentioned, that I'm comfortable with increasing the fees to our residents at this time. Yes.
Yeah. I have a question and then some comments. Excuse me. And it's about these appeal fees. How many appeals have taken place under the $2,000 appeal fee? Not just the council, but, you know, any appeals that have gone, let's say, from the planning hearing office to officer to the planning commission. Do you have that data?
Unfortunately, I don't have that data, and Mr. Calvert is on vacation, and I don't see any other staff. We can try to find out. I'm looking at my budget team, and they don't have that answer. But it's not a large number.
Not a large number.
Yeah, not, definitely not a large number.
So my comment is that I'm disappointed at how we've gotten to this, because we've talked about fees. Well, let me step back. Mr. Calvert has come and presented multiple times changes that he wants to make to the entitlement process to streamline how we permit new construction, new buildings. And he has brought up in that process this idea that perhaps we would increase the fees, basically to set the bar higher for people that want to lodge an appeal, okay? Obviously, to discourage so-called frivolous appeals. I don't know, I mean, there have been some. I don't think that's, there've been that many, but that was the idea. So that came to us. We discussed it. There was obviously some consternation on this council. I don't know how many people were for it or against it, but it was obviously a sensitive subject. It was obviously something that we were not in agreement on, and that was gonna come back to us for further discussion. Then we get into this fee process. We had it discussed with us in briefings. We had the fees discussed here in study session. Nowhere was it mentioned to any of us, at least not to me, in individual briefings and not during the study session, that this appeal fee was being increased. I think it's completely inappropriate, knowing that this is a very sensitive item. I wouldn't have even known that this was in the fee schedule, because I'm not looking at every fee. I wouldn't have known unless Kathy Yurka sent out a message, having caught it with her eagle eye. I cannot support it. I wanna stay at the 2,000, and if we can't make this change to bring it back to the 2,000, I'm going to have to vote against the entire fee schedule, unfortunately. But I cannot support what really feels like a backhanded, slip it in when nobody's looking increase to the appeals fees. And I know you're scowling there, or whatever that facial expression is, and I know that, you know, you feel that that's not what's going on, and that's fine, and it's likely not what's going on, because I know you and I know staff, and that's not the way we operate. But I think from the public's point of view, it really, really looks bad. And so that's where I am. I cannot, I can approve the budget. I can't approve the increase in the fees because of that one item. I can't approve the increase in the fees because of that one item. If we could keep it at 2,000, I'm okay with the fee schedule.
May I? Mayor?
Go ahead, please.
Councilmember Bratman, I completely understand and I agree with the sentiment and the way it looks. I guarantee you that this was not done on purpose. I take responsibility for it. I wasn't made aware of it, even if I were. It didn't rise to the level that it should have, having known the sensitivity in the community. Again, not my doing. It wasn't done on purpose, but I take full responsibility for it. We can, if it's council's desire, move forward and Councilmember Garpetian mentioned the same thing. Maintain, we have other subsidies at the tune of 3.9 million. We can maintain the $2,000 subsidy until such time that we bring the report, the comprehensive report. And at that time, you'll decide based on the policy, how much you want to adjust it by.
Exactly. And I just, just as a final point, I don't want to say I'm opposed to any increase in the fee. I really don't know. I think it has to be discussed separately.
Understood.
So.
No, I think Mr. Kusakian.
Kusakian.
I think one of the ways councils have gone themselves into trouble in the past is by providing an inaccurate picture of what it costs to do the work that the city does. We've seen that with waste collection. We've seen that sometimes with providing, and we currently see it with providing of utilities to our residents and a number of other services. I think to update our fee schedule to reflect the accuracy of what the cost is of doing the city's business is the right thing to do, even though on this particular, the one item as it pertains to appeals, does on the initial figure present itself as a prohibitive amount. Certainly $2,000 is not within everyone's reach either. However, I do believe that it does need to be raised. Just looking online at what inflation, I mean, look, you can, there's numerous articles about how much a Big Mac meal now costs. And I can tell you, just having traveled with my family not too long ago, I was floored by what a burger, fries and soda cost at one of the unnamed fast food chains I stopped in at. Everything has gone up in price and at least, at the very least, our fees need to keep up with rate of inflation as well as CPI. Having said that, there are certain fees that will need to be subsidized by the city in order for people to not feel left out of the democratic process and that they are given a voice. This happens to be one of them. Because I mean, I would, I would gladly approve the fee with the caveat that it comes back for a study of how we subsidize it, but we do need to be very honest and straightforward with the public as to what the cost of business is and for people to understand it. Organizations, whether it's a school, a public university, cities, any agency gets into trouble when the end user of our services has an inaccurate or false picture of what the costs are associated with providing these services. So with that, I would, I would vote to approve it with the caveat that it comes back however soon it can for the discussion as to how we can subsidize and lower certain fees that we deem appropriate. I certainly would not be supportive of keeping it where it is right now. To freeze it would be misrepresenting what those costs are, but at the very least, it should be increased by at least the cost of inflation.
Are you talking about that, that one item?
Specifically, my concern is with the appeals, but there's obviously other ones that need to be looked at as well.
So how do we, how do we calculate the CIP from what year to today to say, okay, it's 2,000, now it should have been 5,000, 4,000 or 10,000?
I can tell you that when we look at campaign contributions that we receive, there's a formula by which that increases. If we can figure out how much candidates are able to receive from campaign contributions from the public or other folks, I'm sure the minds in finance can figure this out as well. I am not a financial expert. Finance was honestly one of the courses that I dreaded in my master's program, but I'm sure that our finance team can figure it out.
So we keep that 2,000 today, approve everything, then come back and see if the...
Mayor and councilmembers, we have a couple of options. You can keep the 2,000. It's really minuscule amount of increase. We can apply the CPI, another option, to that 2,000 and increase it with the fee, citywide fee schedule. And we're not coming back, I think sometime in November, latest early December. So within the next six months or so, the chances of an appeal happening is very little, to be quite frank. We've only had one in '23, '24. So it's really not a significant impact. So we can, option A, keep it at 2,000, move forward with the rest of the fee schedule or apply the CPI and adopt the rest of the fee schedule.
And then come back with a comprehensive policy.
Why can't we approve it at 2,000 and then add to it later? Can we change that?
Absolutely.
So do that. Prove it and then come back and then let's adjust it.
So in November or December, you're going to bring back the policy proposals as well? Okay. And then do you need, on the, on the proposals or the policy, are there specific items you want from my colleagues that should be included in that bucket? Or is staff also going to be like putting in their own recommendations for, because you know, sometimes we may say that economic development or bringing certain events, kinds of events to our city are more important to us, for example, than the $1,000 that they would have to pay in fees.
Absolutely.
Right? So that's why sometimes you'll see the parks fees that are reduced for certain nonprofits and so forth. So I'm hoping that within that policy would be included some of these things that take into account economic development, arts, you know, how we're supporting those things and bringing those things into our city.
Yes, Mayor Sartre, with the policy, we'll bring the list of existing current subsidies based on department's recommendation, based on past practice, based on the direction from previous councils. So you'll have a full picture of what's been subsidized. You may not agree with some of them, right? You may say, well, that's too low and that's an opportunity to adjust them. And you can give us feedback between now and then, as you have done, Mayor, on the areas that you want us to focus on. And August 29th, we have a workshop, council workshop, where as you'll set priorities for the next two, three years, we'll take those priorities and apply them to the fees related to those priorities. All of it, as I call it comprehensive, all of it will be in that report.
Okay. All right. So with that, do we...
Mayor Sartre, we have a number of...
Well, one second. Councilmember Najarian, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do. So I mean, I agree with Mr. Kusakian. These fees represent the city time, labor and perhaps materials that go in to any particular act or activity. Keeping it artificially, and let's be specific about the appeal fee, keeping it artificially low at 2,000 doesn't really do, doesn't do justice. It totally upends our process. We do have safety valves for the appeal process. We do have a pre-screening that before someone or group plunks down their, in this case, $4,600, there's a pre-screening review. Correct, Madam City Attorney?
There's an opportunity, Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, Councilmember Najarian, to have this, under the Uniform Appeal Procedure 2.88 of the municipal code, to bring the item forward to the city council before, to determine whether or not there are findings can be made to support the substantial nature of the appeal. So that is part of the process. However, I do believe that the fee needs to be paid prior to that and I can check on that.
Okay. Another safety valve is any one of us can bring something on appeal to the city council at no fee at all, free. That means if, if your friends say that they're indigent, they can't afford the extra $2,000, they can call you up and say, hey, this is really important. Won't you ask for the appeal? And they can appeal it and it won't cost anything. So we have safety valves for this.
I mean...
I believe that's true.
Councilwoman Najarian, I think just...
It would be through the city manager.
Through the city manager. Because if we're all picking our favorites, I've got a swimming pool that's charging high rates to classes for senior swimmers. I've got an alarm permit that I'm afraid sometimes to put on my alarm because if I get a false alarm, I'm going to get hit with a $25, $50, $100 fee, right chief? Something like that. I see you back there. There are all sorts of fees. I mean, if we're going to open this up and we all put our favorite, renting the public library auditorium, renting brand park, renting a field, renting a playground, renting a picnic area. I mean, I think those are very valid reasons too, to have lower fees that increase a subsidy. So if we're going to open it up, I'm going to throw that, that in there too. And where's that going to get us? Mr. Garpetian, I'm sure has some soccer field rental, car show reservations, whatever it might be. We're blowing the system up. We've got to stick to a plan and move with it. And the plan at this point is have the fees reflect the costs that the city incurs in doing something. Because once you start creating loopholes, I got a lot of loopholes too. You like businesses, small businesses, maybe construction issues. Mr. Bratman's in favor of inappropriate design. We all have our little special concern and it's going to blow up. And I hope we don't go there. I think we should vote on the fees, lock them in, and then if we need to adjust them, then we adjust them under a policy-based decision, something that helps seniors or something that helps community health or something that helps economic development. Specific articulable criteria that we can apply rather than what is going to be a mishmash.
Madam Mayor, Members of the City...
Well, I think that...
I'm sorry, I just wanted to confirm for the council that an aggrieved person who can bring an appeal includes any member of the city council, the city manager, head of city divisions and any member of a board or commission. Such aggrieved party filing a written notice shall pay the fee. Provided however, members of the city council, the city manager and the heads of city divisions are exempt from paying the fee. So that's to confirm it under the code.
There you go.
Well, I would have to say I take issue with your statement about friends calling in to council members. This is the city hall for everyone. And if we're setting up fees, then we should be setting up fees where the average person that doesn't know even how to use an email to be able to email us as their council representatives, I'm not even talking about friends, has the same opportunities as somebody on the street. So I don't think that that's actually a safeguard and I, regardless of that, I think the policy aspect of it is something that I would support. And if we are talking about cost of service, there are a lot of things in this fee schedule today that are being subsidized by ideas that previous council have had. And part of what I want to do is not only implement this policy, but that policy also comes back from time to time for it to be reviewed. So you're not going off of something that was agreed on 10 years ago.
Madam Mayor.
I mean, you cut me off already. Go ahead.
Well, Madam Mayor, I think that we're going in circles with all due respect, which is the reason I'd like us to limit how much longer we're going to debate on this issue and try to approve a budget before the deadline. I understand that, you know, council members see me as part of this delay, but I do not wish to be a part of that delay any longer. I think it's been clearly stated by our professionally hired staff as to the ripple effects that not approving this fee schedule may have. So various council members have specific fees they want to delve into, whether it's swimming for seniors, appeals, whatever it may be. We are the duly elected representatives of the public who can bring those specific fees up for discussion. But again, these fees are going to reflect the actual cost of doing the city's business. If it's okay with you, Madam Mayor, and the rest of my colleagues, I'd like to make a motion for the adoption of all the resolutions with the caveat that we can, we keep the appeals fee at the current rate for it to be reviewed at a later time in the near future by council. That is my motion.
I will, before you do that, I would request that you separate out the fees because I will not be voting for them and I would want to vote for the budget.
All right. We, then that we can...
Actually, my apologies, but we do have speakers on this item.
Go ahead.
We, our first public speaker is Ellen Jerome. You have three minutes.
Mayor Sartre, Members of the council, thank you for letting me speak. I think I should clarify something that isn't being understood here. I refer you to Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association's letter today. These other letters don't really bifurcate the appeals fees. If you look at page 80 of attachment one related to these resolutions, that's a 205-page attachment that lists all the fees. On page 80, there are two appeal fees. The fee for an appeal to the planning commission or city council is currently 2,000, would increase to 4,562. The fee for an appeal of an administrative use permit or administrative design review, that's currently only $520, that will also increase to $4,562. So you're not just talking about one $2,000 appeal fee. You need to address both of them. I attended the budget study session number two on May 7th, 2004. The vice president of Matrix Consulting Group made the presentation on fees and stated, and I'm quoting her, "Typical considerations for why certain fees could be set at lower than full cost recovery is you want to make sure that it's accessible to everyone so it's not creating a barrier to entry." A really common fee for that is appeals. You want to make sure that everyone has their right to appeal. Projects has the ability to appeal those projects. So a lot of times councils choose to set those fees at lower rates. Quote, "I urge you to go back and review the statements made by your paid consultant at the May 7th fee meeting, study session." So I definitely oppose increasing the appeals fees by the suggested amount. Some increase I don't necessarily have a problem with, but I think full cost is not in the public interest of the residents in Glendale. And I think it will also have the effect of limiting appeals to the more affluent residents and disenfranchising lower income residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is on a call. It's Rodney Weimer. Rodney, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Yes, hello. My name is Rodney Werner. I'm vice president of the Adamsdale Neighborhood Association. And on behalf of the association, we urge you to reject staff's proposal to increase the fees on appeals to city council and planning commission as well as the fees to appeal administrative design review decisions. While serving on the Planning Process Streamlining Task Force in 2013, I, along with other concerned homeowners, objected when the public was stripped of its right to a public hearing for many project types as part of the expedited design review process. Our task force was assured that we would be able to appeal administrative design decisions to DRB for a reduced fee. That fee was eventually set at $1,000, which seemed like a lot to us at the time, and yet it was subsequently raised to $2,000, which is starting to make it difficult for people to exercise their right to a public hearing through the appeal process. The increase was done without public engagement and was obviously intended to discourage the public from exercising the right to appeal. Regardless of the basis for calculating the fees, this is essentially a tax on citizens who want to voice their concern. The exorbitant fees would also result in only the affluent having a voice in the planning process. We urge you to reject this undemocratic and underhanded attempt to silence the public. We urge you to reject this undemocratic and underhanded attempt to silence the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next and final caller is Catherine Irika. Catherine, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for taking my call. I'd like to thank council members Garpetian and Bratman for the comments. I did want to clarify that the appeal fees have never been more than $2,000. I believe it's the cost of providing the service that is decreased, which means that the city subsidy has substantially decreased as well. Councilmember Najarian's executive directive, actually, the first false alarm with police come is no fine, but it doesn't cost the city nothing. The second false alarm is $122, but it's waived if taken if an online education course is taken. That sending the police out a second time also does not cost nothing. I mean, the point is that the city does subsidize certain things, and I believe the city manager said something about Glendale subsidizing roughly $3 million in fees, given the tiny, tiny number of appeals that Glendale faces. The appeal fee is not counting for much of that. I really urge you not to increase it. There are those of us who can cut a tax for $2,000 without issue, but as someone who has raised money for an appeal a couple of times, I can tell you that it is not easy because people, you know, are burdened. You know, even homeowners can be very cash poor in a city like Glendale. So I urge you to leave it as it is and to pass the rest of the, and just leave it for future conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it? All right. Councilmember Kasakian, would you be open to making a motion on items 1 and 4?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to also, I'd like to amend my motion to keep both that appeal and administrative review appeal, those two, at the current rates for those to be studied. Other than that, my resolute, my motion stands, and I'm willing to take that item regarding the fee schedule separate from the remainder of the resolutions.
Second.
Madam Mayor, for purposes of clarification, if that is the motion, it would be affecting 8C2. That's the resolution establishing certain fees. And that would be an amended resolution retaining the fees at their current rates in the 2023-24. That is reflected on page 80 of 205, under Section 5 Community Development, Section 2 Planning Fees. To just be clear, that's where the proposed fees at $4,562 are set forth for appeals to planning commission, city council, and appeals of administrative use permits or administrative design review. So those are the two that have been discussed. So just for purposes of clarification, that would only impact Resolution 8C2.
Thank you, Ms. Van Miden. Yes, that is correct.
All right. Is your motion only on the fees or on all of it?
On my motion, I'm moving all of the resolutions for the budget with that amendment to the portion as it relates to C2, to the fees that was outlined by Attorney Van Miden. And I'm willing to, for your consideration, Madam Mayor, since you asked, to have that particular item, 8, which would be 8C2, to be considered separately or for a separate vote from 8C1, 3, and 4.
Second.
I guess we break up, break up the roll call. Just do one roll call on 1, 3, and 4.
The first roll call would be on 8C1, 3, and 4. Right.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Bratman.
Yes.
Harpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Asatian.
Yes.
C2.
Roll call on C2.
Councilmembers Bratman.
Yes.
Harpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Satrian.
All right. Next item.
Action Item G, Glendale Water and Power, Regarding Glendale Water and Power Annual Authority for the Purchase or Sale of Energy Commodities and Services. One Resolution Approving Renewal of Annual Authorization for the City Manager or GWP General Manager Order Designated to Enter into Contracts for the Purchase or Sale of Energy Commodities and Services, Including the Transfer of Initiating and Cleaning Broker's Services Not to Exceed Five Years in Duration and Dispensing with Competitive Bidding.
Welcome.
Assistant General Manager, Glendale Water and Power, specifically power management, which this is specifically associated to. The reading of the resolution pretty much covered everything I was about to say, but essentially, we are looking for authorization to dispense with competitive bidding so that we can act to purchase in real time, which is a very critical time for us in the commodity side, to buy commodities that are so specific to power, transmission, environmental attributes, and transmission. Thank you. And transmission. So, and with the additional limit that any of these purchases and sales cannot exceed five-year term. This is a very consistent request. We come back every year and, out of an abundance of transparency, ask for you to authorize our ability to transact in this way. If we do not get the authority to do so, we will have a major issue functioning within the energy and transmission markets and, which will create a real issue with us being able to supply energy or load on a daily, hourly, and long-term basis. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I'll move the item if there are no questions.
Second.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, there is a substituted resolution on this item. It is, in Section 2, there was a misspelling. It was referenced to a time duration. It should say five years, so the updated resolution says five instead of FIE. It was a misspelling, so we wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Thank you. Good. Okay, I'll move the amended resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Bratman.
Yes.
Harpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Satrian.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next item.
Action Item E, City Attorney, Regarding Appointment of Interim Director of Finance. One Resolution Appointing Michelle Flynn as Interim Director of Finance pursuant to Government Code Section 7522.56 and 212218, An Approving Employment Agreement.
Appointed. No. Go ahead, Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Asatian, members of the city council, effective tomorrow, actually, there will be a vacant, a vacancy in the director of finance position as the current director of the joint finance and IT departments will be returning to exclusively head the information technology department. Gentleman being Jason Bradford. He carried the torch for two and a half years, and he's done a tremendous job, and I wanted to thank him for it. He left already. All right. So therefore, I intend to appoint Michelle Flynn, who is the former director of finance, as the interim director of finance, effective June 26, 2024, while we conduct a recruitment for a new director of finance. Ms. Flynn served as the finance director from July 30, 2019, to December 9 of 2021, and worked for the city for a total of 22 years before deciding to retire. Since Ms. Flynn is a CalPERS retiree and would be employed by the city as a retired annuitant under CalPERS regulation and the California Government Code, it requires the appointment of a retired annuitant to executive level, only executive level position, that be approved by the governing body of the employer in a public meeting as we are doing tonight. Additionally, the retired annuitant cannot receive any benefit, incentive, or other form of compensation in addition to their hourly rate, which for Ms. Flynn would be $117.79 per hour. Also, the requirement would limit the hours to 960 in a given fiscal year. With that, I respectfully recommend your approval of the appointment of Michelle Flynn as interim director of finance while we go through the recruitment process.
Great. Do we have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second.
All right. Roll call.
Councilmembers Bratman.
Yes.
Harpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Satrian.
Yes. All right. Congratulations are in order.
Yes, congratulations, Mr. Bradford. Ms. Flynn is not in attendance.
All right. Next item.
Next is Action Item F, Public Works, Regarding Levy of Annual Assessment and Preparation of the Engineers' Report for Fiscal Year 2024-2025 for the North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District. One Resolution Initiating the Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Levy of Annual Assessment and Ordering the preparation of the Engineers' Report. Two Resolution Prelimarily Approving the Engineers' Report for the Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Levy and Collection of Annual Assessments. Three Resolution Declaring the City Council's Intention to Levy and Collect the Annual Assessment for Fiscal Year 2024-2025.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council, while the presentation is being brought up. So this is an annual item that's brought before the city council. So as a way of background, the maintenance district was formed on January 9 of 2007. Based on the formation, it was determined that property owners will receive a special benefit from improvements and maintenance in the district. Those improvements and maintenance currently include landscaping, utilities, few maintenance, litter collection, which is handled both by our contractor and in-house staff. So here we have a map of the maintenance district, which shows each color-coded zone. The district stretches from the southeast side of the city to the northwest side near their Burbank border. So here on this slide, we have a formulaic approach of how each parcel amount within the district is levied. The levied per equivalent benefit unit, the EBU, which is referenced on the slide, for each zone is calculated by dividing the net budgeted for the zone, which is, we're calling the balance to levy, by the total EBU for all the benefiting properties within each respective zone. This assessment rate is then applied to each parcel's assigned EBU to determine the parcel's proportionate benefit and assessment obligation for the improvement. So on page three of the staff report, staff provided a table with each assessment rate per EBU per zone. And in the engineering's report in Exhibit B, we have the assessment roll for each parcel. So as was mentioned in the introduction of the item, for today's, for tonight's purposes, what we're asking the council for the proposed resolution is to order the preparation of the engineers' report. Preliminary approved the draft engineering report, which is attached to the staff report, and then to give a public notice that a hearing will be held before the city council on July 9 for the proposed levy. We're happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Protem.
So are there any other questions or any callers on this item?
No callers on this item.
I'll move 8F, 1, 2, and 3.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
Councilmembers Bratman.
Yes.
Harpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Satrian.
Yes. Next item.
Next, our discussion of council member future agenda requests. Request A, Councilmember Najarian's request for retention of an independent law firm to prepare a legal opinion regarding the validity of the mayoral selection decision of April 2, 2024, including the reasons provided there for carryover from June 4, 2024 council meeting.
Oral communication is after this item.
Okay. So this is getting a little bit absurd here. First off, I am not asking for an independent law firm to prepare a legal opinion regarding the validity of the mayoral selection decision of April 2. Let's get that clear. What I'm asking for is an answer from the city attorney. It should not have to be something that comes before council to permit the city attorney to answer a question that a council member has. The city attorney's job is to advise council, whether asked specifically or not. It shouldn't come to the council because I'm not seeking legislation. I'm not seeking council to do anything affirmatively. I just want an answer from the city attorney. And it doesn't really matter what the specific question is, as long as it's germane and related to something that the council has dealt with, is dealing with, or will deal with in the future. We have a contract with the city attorney. We hired the city attorney to perform certain actions. We hired Mr. Garcia in 2011. We extended his contract in 2015. I know that because I signed it. And his job, his job, we hired him to perform the functions and duties specified in the city charter. Got that? I hope there's no objection to that because that's here in black and white. City attorney's agreement amended and restated 2011, 2015, and up. So what are his duties? According to the charter, the city attorney shall give his advice or opinion in writing whenever required by the council or other officers. He shall be under the administrative direction of the city manager. Now, who are the officers of the city? The officers of the city shall be the five members of the council. So let's put it in perspective. An officer of the city, myself, is asking a question of the city attorney. His duties under the charter state that he shall give that answer, and his specific employment contract says that's his job. Now, how is this any different from Mr. Bratman sending an email to Mr. Calvert, asking him a question, and Mr. Calvert answering that question? How is it different than Ms. Asaturian sending a question to Mr. Galanian and having Mr. Galanian answer that question? It doesn't have to come to council to vote, shall we let that department head answer us if we have a question on the building code and we call our building official? That doesn't have to come to us for a vote. How absurd is this? It's a question that I'm asking our city attorney that he should answer, and there's no reason why he shouldn't answer it. And if he doesn't answer it, he's violating his duties under the employment contract, which is, by the way, the last time I checked, cause for termination. Now, if I got this wrong, if I got this wrong, you let me know. But if you ever ask a question then of any department head, I'm going to demand that it come to council for a vote, the same way apparently someone here has made the decision that I, maybe it's the city attorney, that I have to come to council to get approval to ask a question and get an answer from the city attorney. Now, I don't know who can answer that at this point, but I have his employment agreement. I have the charter, and I have the definitions. I'm asking a question. That question should be answered.
There's a question from Mr. Bratman?
And you know what the question is. It doesn't matter what the question is, but it's a question that's germane to what has happened in council.
Councilmember Bratman.
Yeah. I thought this was about a request to get an outside opinion, an independent legal opinion on this question of, anyway, on a particular question that has to do with what's happening in California law or this case in San Diego or whatever. But I want to ask the, I guess.
I was also under that impression.
Yeah. So. Yeah, so I didn't know it was simply asking the city attorney for a question.
Well, it was, no, actually, as a matter of fact, they were saying that he didn't want the city attorney to.
That's what I remember.
He was seeking to get outside counsel.
I presumed the city attorney would have a legal conflict, so I jumped ahead a little bit. If the city attorney thinks they have a legal conflict, then that should be brought to us, and I shouldn't have been asking for it at that point. But at this point, it's a simple question about the state of the law in California.
Okay, so let me ask the acting city attorney, or assistant city attorney, whatever we want to call you right now, what is the legal department's objection, if any, to answering the question that Councilmember Najarian is posing?
Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, Councilmember Brotman, one of the issues here has been touched on already, and that is an issue of potential conflict. There is also potential litigation, which, to my knowledge at this point in time, has not been filed but has been threatened. So those are two issues that we have to take into consideration in whether or not an opinion that may potentially be in conflict with or be part of that litigation might be called into question. So that's one consideration. The other is, if there's an independent council to be hired, that is a city council's direction. So that is why this item is here, seeking the council's direction on whether or not that should occur and have this be placed on the agenda. So we're here on a tied vote, which is carried over. Now we have a full council, and the council has the potential to majority vote to add this to a future agenda for consideration of whether or not the council wishes to seek independent council's advice on the question that Mr. Najarian has posed. We did also want to say that since Councilmember Najarian is already represented by council, he's not precluded from using his counsel or hiring his own counsel to obtain such an opinion.
Okay, so let me, I'm not, almost done. So I guess the difference, you know, I'm trying to deal with this question, the difference between what Councilmember Najarian is asking, what I might be asking Mr. Calvert, is basically I'm not threatening to sue the city. So my question can be answered without the fear of it becoming material for a lawsuit. So that seems to be a pretty clear distinction in my mind.
It is to us.
So that's all I have.
If I can address the concerns of the acting city attorney.
I do want to remind everyone that we're not supposed to have deliberations. Please, go ahead, Councilmember Najarian.
Well, there shouldn't even be a deliberation. I'm not asking for an independent counsel. I said that last time. I'm saying it again now. I'm saying that again now. I'm asking for an answer from the city attorney about a question. Now, if the city attorney feels they have a conflict, that should not deny me, as an elected member of the council, to get that answer from one person or another. That's why I, in my mind, if they felt there was a conflict, maybe they should go ahead down that independent counsel route. But that's not where I'm pushing it. It's a simple question that I have. It should be answered. I'm entitled to an answer whether I'm suing the city or not. I don't lose my rights as an officer of the city because I have a problem and I'm threatening an action on something that happened three months ago. There is no grounds to deny me that information, no grounds at all. And if there's any, any, you know, citation for that, I certainly would like to hear that. But I think what the city attorney is doing now is in bad faith. It's depriving me, representing the people in the city of Glendale, an answer to a question that I've asked.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, that's not what's here under new business.
Councilmember Najarian, you specifically requested an independent law firm. When you put in this request, I think you opening up with, well, this is kind of getting out of control. This is not what I asked for. It's literally what you asked for when you brought this item up, so.
Well, it wasn't to determine the validity of the April 2nd election. Go back in the record, I never said that. That wasn't my statement. I felt that in answering this, there might be an independent counsel required due to a conflict that the city attorney might have to declare under his legal and ethical obligations. That's something else altogether. I never said, let's let the city attorney decide if what we did April 2nd was correct or not. Clearly, they're not going to answer that question. I have a much narrower question that I've asked, and you have no reason to deprive me of that answer or the people of Glendale.
Councilmember Kazakian.
Thank you. So my question is, has, and so much of this is now things I'm trying to suppress in my immediate prefrontal cortex and memory. So remind me, Councilmember Najarian, was this question that you have posed to the city attorney put in writing?
When you ask questions of staff, they answer you in writing. I would expect the same dignity of something in writing to me as well.
Well, I think for us to understand clearly, and I know Ms. Van Miden has stated that, I think, you know, and I've posed questions to staff and asked for a memo afterwards, which is to be shared with all of council, but I've also directly written questions to them via email for the purpose of clarity and for it to be on the record as to why the city attorney may not respond to you. I think it behooves you, in this particular case, as, since it is different from this, to put that question in writing. Feel free, I believe, to copy us on it or to send it directly to those parties, and then we can await to see if the city attorney will provide his response similar to the concerns that Ms. Van Miden has expressed. If that is the case, then I think Ms. Van Miden has expressed that there are other options available to you, and we can then take up the issue of whether the city attorney was being, I don't know if insubordinate is the right word, but ignorant to your request.
Furthermore, for the record, I've spoken to the city manager, whose job is to administer the city attorney, and I understand that same request that I'm making was put to the city attorney. So how many ways are we going to slice this? It's a question that I'm entitled an answer to. Now, you're going to make me take this off the agenda and ask for it to come back again? You know, I think this is great evidence of the games that this council is playing and your disregard for simple governmental procedure.
Councilmember Najarian, your request is listed as requested on our agenda, and I.
I didn't write that. Maybe the city clerk wrote that. I did not put it in that matter.
Last time we were here, when there was a two-two vote on this issue, you sang a very different tune. And then we come here today, you're singing something else. I, I don't know what it is that you're looking for. Are you going to change your mind when this item comes back?
First of all, I'm not singing about anything. I'm trying to get the same courtesy and consideration that any one of you have when you contact staff for an answer. So I resent the fact that you're saying I'm singing a tune. I'm singing the tune of justice if there's a tune out there to be sung.
Okay, so is there a motion? That's what I don't understand. Are you making a motion?
I shouldn't have to make a motion to get an answer from the city attorney. Don't you guys understand?
That's what this new business is.
But you wanted an independent law firm. In order to have that, that is what you requested, that is what is on the agenda. And in order for that to happen.
From the city attorney. I do not want an, I do not want someone to tell us if what we did on April 2nd was valid or not. And I never asked for that. I never asked for that. I wanted an answer to my question about a particular state of the law in California, the same way you ask about building codes, the same way you ask about zoning, the same way other people ask about design issues. That's all I want. It's a state of the law. I'm entitled to it. And if I don't get it, I'm going to take that as insubordination. Maybe you don't want it to go that way. But there's no reason to deprive me of that answer.
Our.
Because procedurally, I have no idea what we're doing. This is new business. There's supposed to be a motion and a second to put something on a future agenda. I can't figure out what it is we're motioning or seconding. And if there isn't one, we should move on.
Yes.
I believe that the question is the city attorney's performance that you have objection with Mr. Najarian. You're more than welcome to have that agendized, and I think there's a procedure by which we've handled those issues, and it can be taken to a closed session discussion. But, you know, not seeing anything beyond that. And I understand this was a tied decision last time it was before you. I cannot support moving forward with what is listed here as it is. So I don't know if that makes any difference in helping us move along this meeting to its final conclusion or not, but that's where I stand on it.
What I'm asking for is not what's on 12A, although it is a corollary to 12A, asking for a answer to an issue of law relating to that, but not specifically the decision. So if you want me to ask again, now ask it to be replaced on the agenda while we play around with this, I think that's a shame that council's playing this game and denying me an answer. So let me ask that, I'd like to place on a future agenda that the city attorney follow the duties under his employment agreement and answer a question put to him by an officer of the city pursuant to the city charter. How about that? Anybody want to have a vote on that? I mean, that's kind of absurd, but let's vote on that, too.
Before we move forward, are we going to land back at your, the answer you gave us today?
I can't answer that question at this time, but that is a different question, and it would have to come back, as indicated, framed in the way that Councilmember Najarian did frame it as a request for a discussion of a Councilmember Future Agenda Request at your next council meeting.
All right. So, Councilmember Najarian, do you want a vote, a formal vote?
I withdraw 12A.
All right, and now you're putting in a new one.
And request that the issue, as I stated, come back.
I know, but I'm asking if he wants a vote, a formal vote on what's, what he initially requested.
No, I withdraw that.
Okay, yes, okay, all right. Can we make sure that.
Do we need a second for that?
No, we don't.
No, sir.
Can we make sure that however Councilmember Najarian stated it is how it ends up on the agenda?
And we will verify that by reviewing the tape to ensure that it's accurate.
I appreciate that, thank you. All right. Next item.
Next item is Item B, Discussion of Councilmember Future Agenda Requests. Mayor Asatryan's Request to Review the Legislative History of the Glendale Municipal Code Provisions Pertaining to the Role and Duties of the Commission on the Status of Women and Consider Amendments There Too, Moved from May 21st, 2024.
I know I moved this a couple of times. I'm going to try to keep this brief. I brought this up during the budget sessions as well, but over the years, the powers of the Women's Commission have been reduced along with all of the programming that we used to have, looking at wanting to agendize an item where we look at the powers of the Women's Commission and looking at providing funding from our budget to actual programming. And I'm not looking to just go back to a system we used to have. You know, my hope is that we truly become a model in this space in empowering our women and girls and uplifting our women-owned businesses.
Okay, you want to make a motion?
I can't make a motion.
Oh, okay. So basically, you're looking for staff to come back with a report on the history of these changes that we've made to the powers of the Women's Commission, and that we have a discussion about what we think the Women's Commission should be, what kind of powers it should have, kind of funding.
I would like, not just the history, but also some models of what it could look like, and then like funding opportunities for the programming. That was, that also used to exist, that no longer exists. Again, I'm not looking to go back to the old system. I'm just looking at us, looking at the powers of the Women's Commission. They used to meet once a month. They now meet once every four months, I believe. There used to be programming like self-defense classes and Camp Rosie and all that good stuff, and we don't have that anymore. And so, again, I'm pretty sure there's other amazing programs we can come up with, but I would love for us to be intentional in this space.
One thing I want to mention, I think that the programs that we used to have were really good, and my kids went through it, my daughters went through it, and they had a great time, especially at Camp Rosie, and they had other art classes and everything else. But one thing I want, when staff comes back, I just don't want to go to every different city that is, has nothing to do with Glendale, like San Jose, San Francisco, Seattle, San Diego, and bring their model to Glendale. We have to create our own. If you want to do anything else or not go back to what we had in the past, because although it worked really well, I just don't want to go bring bits and pieces of other programs that exist in different cities and implement it here because then we make mistakes. I think we have to craft it that serves Glendale, basically. Some of these large cities that are too large, and their programs may work well for their constituents, but not for Glendale.
So I would, I would actually say that, provided the annual report that the Commission on the Status of Women in Glendale reports, right, whether it's on education and poverty and income and business success and all of those things, I think that is a great starter for us to look at locally of what our local needs are in, and in helping craft policies and programs that support uplifting those.
I mean, 2023 was, I went through the report. Women in Glendale are doing well, based on 2023 report, and we want to improve that, of course, but I know we don't have a discussion today, but.
I'm just looking to agendize this item and.
Unless you want to pass the gavel and make the motion yourself, otherwise, oh.
All right.
Okay, you want to do that?
Mayor Asatryan, we do have a caller and I think another one. That's in the process of calling.
All right.
So our first caller is Mike Mohill. One second. Mike, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Mohill. Goodbye, Councilman Dan Brotman. Am I boring you already to leave the room? How rude you are, as usual. Okay, now, the Women's Commission. Why do we need a Women's Commission? Why don't we have a Men's Commission? Why don't we have a Teenagers' Commission? Why do we need commissions in the first place? What business is it this city council to have these different commissions and then fund it? Which, you know, we don't have money to pay for our pensioned obligations, and yet you're going to waste money on a Women's Commission or a Gay Commission. You name the commission, and we don't have money. This is a waste, this is a feel-good for women like yourself, Mayor Asatryan. How many women feel the way you do?
So many.
You feel deprived, I understand Councilman Najarian just barking, just saying things, women are doing well in Glendale. Hey, you know what? Women are passing, there are more women in college today than there are men in college today. How are they suffering? What they're not doing is staying home having babies. That's the problem. And because you're gotten so educated women, guess what happens? There's not enough men out there who want to date these educated women, and on Saturday night, men are home waiting for a date. We don't need to have a Women's Commission. If you're going to have a Women's Commission, let's start the Men's Commission. Okay, we're suffering because of the power of women, the power of women. The teenagers need a commission. They're suffering, too. Everybody needs a commission. You just went ahead and say, we just made June Gay Pride Commission, Gay Pride a month. Why don't we have Father's, full month of July is Father's Day, and everything should be a popular, I mean, this city council is getting ridiculous. Where's your rudder? I think your rudder is on the left side of the agenda. Bring yourself back to the center and think logical. Don't think emotional, Councilwoman Ellen Asatryan. You're not a role model for women anymore. You lost that, you lost that. You lost that, you lost that honor when you bumped Councilman Ari Najarian from being the rightful mayor. You used your power with Councilman Najari, with Councilman Brodmann and Kasakian. And it's came back to bite you because when you ran for the Assembly seat, you came in fourth. And trust me, I don't think you're going to go any further than one term as a city.
Thank you, you're out of time. Our next caller.
Before you go on, I do have to say it looks like the 1950s called. And at least one man in Glendale answered that call. You know, the, the comments that were made are absolutely unacceptable. And the stereotypes around women's issues, I will not accept on this dais, so, next call.
Next caller is Denise Miller. Denise, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to, first off, thank you, Mayor Asatrian, for bringing this on the agenda. Good evening to the rest of City Council and staff.
Denise, we can hear you.
Specifically, as you do explore this, I think the agenda item is to explore this. And what can be very, what I would ask you to do as part of your process, having served as a commissioner, having been on the commission when it was very robust and when we were really doing a lot of things within the community to elevate the status of women and to work with teenage girls and to work with men and educate with them as well on things related to domestic violence. Specifically, if you could, as part of your process, consider if cost is the issue, I would ask you to perhaps have staff think creatively. For example, the Serotimus, a very robust group in Glendale, works on human trafficking. Maybe the commission can play a more active role with them. The YWCA took over Camp Rosie, but the executive director has left. There's room for Camp Rosie to teach our young women how to be in business, how to be in leadership roles. We had business owners come and speak to them. We had funding where we gave vouchers so that women with domestic violence issues who could not get into housing, we could partner with the police department. There are numerous ways to think creatively without raising costs by partnering, by really tasking this commission to partner with so many groups in Glendale that are doing so many wonderful things. So my purpose in commenting tonight is to ask you to consider that staff, you might advise staff to look at all of those when they come back to you with a model and look at what the issues might be. I do agree that the meeting should be more than quarterly. There's lots of things for the Women's Commission to discuss. I don't think we have to go back to the way it was. I don't think it has to be a heavy lift for staff. But I do think there's a number of things we can do to elevate the status. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Our next caller is Hans Johnson. Hans, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Good evening again, Glendale Council. It's my honor to be able to speak on this issue, especially in light of the noble effort of the commission to make the recommendation for the LGBTQ Pride Month proclamation earlier on tonight's agenda. And I do just want to take a moment to speak to the bigoted and chauvinistic remarks that were voiced earlier, which in their own way are evidence that the need for the commission's funding and activities throughout the community really is current and of some urgency. Earlier in the spring, this council heard testimony about the makeup of the city of Glendale's workforce, which was striking in that unlike so many other public jurisdictions and public workforces in Los Angeles County and throughout the nation, Glendale's workforce is something of an outlier. 69% of the positions are held by men. That is not representative of public workforces, which at all levels tend to be slightly more balanced or slightly more women than men, even in its highest professional ranks. And I think it points out the need for work in Glendale particularly, for recruitment, for networking and for relationship building, outreach and communication by such entities as the commission and the Status of Women to redress that imbalance in the workforce at all levels in the city of Glendale. This commission has incredible work to do, as Denise Miller just evidenced, just referenced. Many opportunities for partnership, a theme that has been, I think, a really marvelous one at tonight's meeting and discussions from the Juneteenth and LGBTQ proclamations on through the agenda tonight. So I urge you on behalf of the East Area Progressive Democrats and so many of our own community partners in and around Glendale to invest in the good work of this commission. Its efforts will be richly rewarded now and in future generations of Glendale and by the work of the council in partnership with this commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our final caller is Jenny Kenyonas Skinner. Jenny, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Thank you both to our mayor and city council. I have a little bit of a cold, so I hope I, I think everyone can hear me okay. I do think this issue is important. I think to be able to have a sustainable Women's Commission, it's important to look at funding. It's important to raise this to the next agenda so we can really look at how a Women's Commission can be effective. As someone in our community that works with a lot of youth in college students, this is such an important support to have within the city when we're looking to hire new people, when we're looking to attract talent, our small business owners. And then from a very practical standpoint, a lot of women in our city, especially in my age group, are balancing roles as caregivers. And we are a very family-oriented city. So I really would like to see our city council look at how those roles as caregivers, whether for children or adult and/or adult parents, can really impact the lives of women who are trying to move up in their careers or have, you know, develop professional experience. And I do think that's something not unique to our community, but something at a value that we hold so important are our family connections. And for me, a Women's Commission would be able to help explore this and other topics too. So I really do hope that this is voted on and moved to further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'll make the motion.
May I ask, make a friendly amendment to the motion? And that's in the report. We also bring in the role that the Y, Y, in the symbiotic relationship with the YWCA and the Women's Commission. That means let's just not talk about the Women's Commission. Let's see what role the YWCA was playing as a whole for the city's women.
Yeah, of course. Actually, I, I mean, I would actually say I think like for Sexual Assault Awareness Month and whatnot. I remember that the city of Glendale would partner with the YWCA.
Mayor Asatrian, Councilmember Najarian, we in fact do partner with the YWCA on, on a number of projects, including the Purple Tie Awards currently. But I know that the commission did even more with.
Yeah, that's my point. The commission did more and some of that, whether it was budgetary, was sort of taken over by the YW. But I mean, let's see how that, that historic, well, it's a historical look, so I guess it's not even an amendment.
All right. I already made the motion.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Roll call. Councilmembers Brodmann.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Kasakian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Asatrian.
Yes. What's next?
Next is oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. We do have two speaker cards. Our first card is by Margarita Avedisian.
Tired, so I keep it short. I want to respond to your question about your friend, Mr. Najarian, that he's having lots of problems with heart attack, hypertension and other issues. And because we are living in a society that's lots of information, positive, more negative information. And we do not know how to handle and we do not have enough space to speak it up. Working very closely with the community, the past 25 years, I, I had an office in, with Hollywood Production. I find out that we need more to communicate with each other. We would, I would like to see like one-stop offices that will support community. Because we have a DPS which covers the social services, but that is not enough. They do not give enough information to the public. We spent hours and hours on the phone. I have four phones in my office. I put all of them on hold to make sure that if someone answers after two hours or after three hours. So if we have one-stop offices around the city, people who need help, they can come in. Those helps can do lots of things and it will take the load off of the Social Security Office or, you know, nowadays the Social Security cases, it lasts 200 days and more compared to 150 days, which is ridiculous. Like your friend who has problems physically, you know how, how long it takes to get a appointment with a psychologist nowadays? Six months. And the phone says, oh, if you feel you want to commit suicide, you can go to the hospital or make appointment in six months. So that, in that cases, we can prevent lots of crises among people. They will know that there is an office, they can go in and get an answer, quick answer, because they do not have time. That's the first issue I wanted to talk and we can combine all the baby boomers who are retiring, who are professionals. They look, they come to me, they say, can we do something, even clean your office? Which my office is always lots of papers. They want to clean the office just to feel needed. So we can use those volunteers, which are professional, to help the young generation that we were talking. And the second thing I wanted to discuss, we have a bullying issue in our schools, especially the Glendale High School. And the kids are afraid to speak up because they feel threatened if they speak up. So it would be a good idea to have outside psychologists, teen psychologists that can speak with them. We have one office, which is Pacific Clinic, that has a wraparound program. I was the first member of that program when we started 26 years ago, Pacific Clinic. But I'm not sure if one clinic is able to handle those issues. So I am willing to work with the city to design a program. I don't expect any money. I'm.
Your time is up, but if we have her contact information, if you can pass it on to me via email, I'd love for us to continue the conversation.
Our final speaker is Ramela Iragi.
Yeah, hi, everybody. Yeah, I'm going to council meeting for almost two years. And I noticed that almost, almost every, in every council meeting, we see, we see council, we see senior members of our community coming to, coming to chamber and asking for affordable housing. And this is very heartbroken for me that, that this, that a member of the council, members of the council or a member of council give, misguide the senior members around this issue, around affordable housing. And most of them, they refer them to the housing authorities. Whether these council members don't know what's going on in their, in the city when it comes to housing or, or they, or they deceiving, or they, they attempt to deceive the senior members of this committee. And this is really heartbroken for me. These people come here, for example, today. Today, I, I, we, we all witness a senior member came here and asking for affordable housing. They're in need of affordable housing. And actually, I, I don't know if you noticed that, there was a, that this, this lady was talking about, another lady that was on a wheelchair and sitting on the back, back of this chamber. And that, actually, that was talking, that he was for, was talking for that lady. Yeah, actually, and see, a member of this, a member of this council referred, referred that person to the housing, uh, housing authority. Whether you don't know, I guess you, you better go see what's going on in, in your housing department, especially when it comes to affordable housing. Yeah, this, I really, this is real heartbroken, heartbreaking that. Because I, I've been, I've been involved with this housing issue for, for almost two years. And I know that there's no help there, that you're referring these people to, to that department. And yeah, I'm, I'm just. Yeah, this, this has happened many times. And yeah, this is not the first time that you referred the senior member of the committee to that, to that department. So, yeah, I just don't give false hopes to people, to senior members. I mean, if you really can't do anything about it, just, I don't know. I don't know how, how you want to answer to them. But, yeah, I mean, this is really, really not the way you're approaching to this issue, to the housing, when it comes to the senior members. Yeah, just, that's a, that's a critics towards members, member of this council. So maybe you have to reconsider that next time when, when somebody coming. I mean, it's all almost, almost in any council meeting, we see people that are coming and asking for, for housing. And yeah, just, yeah, just, just stop that. Just find another way, way to deal with this issue. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned at 9:30 PM. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.